It is now six thirty and we ask that you would please stand for the invocation to be given by Reverend Poole with our police department and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. And we do ask Reverend Poole to definitely continue to keep the white family in our thoughts and prayers along with our officers Merritt and Webb, along with the family that was displaced and the gratefulness of our firefighters as well. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. The Bible tells us to pray for all those that are in authority and right now we just, we ask everyone to just help us to pray, all those that desire to pray. If you will bow your heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you and we pray for all those that are in authority. We pray for our president. We pray for our governor. We pray for Chair Wood and all the Board of Commissioners. We pray for the chief of police. We pray for our fire chief and our sheriff. We pray for all the officers of the Henry County Police Department. We pray for Officer Merritt, Officer Webb. Pray for Mr. Wright. We pray for the families that were displaced. Father God, we thank you for all those in authority. We pray right now for divine wisdom and grace will be given unto them. We pray that tonight, direction will be given unto us. We ask you for your wisdom right now and we pray for everyone's family and all the citizens of Henry County. We ask that you cover us and protect us in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now hereby call tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. We do have two announcements. Planning and items, uh, planning and zoning item, RZ eighteen, which is the Builders Professional Group, is requesting a rezoning from RA to R two that was located at seven twenty-eight Elliott Road, has been postponed. Again, RZ eighteen twenty-two has been postponed. And we also have an adjustment to item that has been removed by the county manager. And that item is on, just a moment. Yeah, item nine C regarding the public hearing regarding a proposed plan for Henry County to enter into with ACCG, a multi-year purchase contract to, for the annual renewal with respect to the Henry County Public Safety Administration. So, that has been removed for the agenda. Are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda? Hearing nine C and nine, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. The amended agenda is approved. We're now moving to our proclamations and we invite Ms. Melissa Robinson, who's our public information officer.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This evening, we have three proclamations and what we're going to do is read all three and then we'll have groups come up for a picture with the board. The first proclamation tonight is in recognition of April two thousand nineteen as National Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism is a complex developmental disability that most often appears in early childhood and encompasses a broad range of conditions affecting the way an individual communicates and interacts with others, but not, with others, but not limited to reasoning and motor skill challenges and sensory sensitivities. And whereas, according to the CDC, one percent of the global population has an autism spectrum disorder and the prevalence of autism has nearly doubled from the early two thousands to two thousand eighteen, with one of every fifty-nine babies born in the United States being diagnosed. And whereas, experts say that more than three point five million Americans live with an autism spectrum disorder, both adults and children whom are our colleagues, classmates, friends, and loved ones, each having something to contribute to the American story. And whereas, with increased awareness, early diagnosis and intervention, and access to appropriate services and support, outcomes can be significantly improved in which those living with autism can be productive and enjoy opportunities to achieve the highest quality of life. And whereas, we recognize all of those around the globe who live on the autism spectrum and the challenges they face, and we celebrate the countless ways they strengthen our communities and enrich our world, and we reaffirm their fundamental rights to participate fully in society, live with respect, and achieve their greatest potential. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the month as Autism Awareness Month and joins our communities in supporting initiatives that bring awareness and early intervention to those affected by autism, and support endeavors to raise acceptance and understanding for those affected by autism as well as their family, friends, and supporters. This sixteenth day of April two thousand nineteen.
The second proclamation is in recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators' Week, April fourteenth through the twentieth of this year. It reads, "Whereas, emergencies can occur at any time throughout the day or night, often requiring assistance from police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is often critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the emergency communicate, communication center as public safety telecommunicators are the first contact that citizens have with emergency services acting as the front line of first responders in an emergency. And whereas, the public safety professionals are the primary and critical link for police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio and providing them information to ensure not only their safety on scene, but the safety and well-being of others. And whereas, Henry County's E nine one-one public safety telecommunicators have contributed substantially through their work serving Henry County, assisting in the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, treatment of patients, and as a reassuring voice to those in need. And whereas, Henry County dispatchers exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism while maintaining a sense of urgency while utilizing specialized knowledge to successfully, successfully perform their duties. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth as National Public Safety Telecommunicators' Week in Henry County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. Be it further proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners express its sincerest appreciation of Henry County's dedicated team of telecommunicators for their outstanding service to Henry County and its citizens on this day, signed by Chair June Wood and attested by the county clerk."
Okay. Our final proclamation of the evening is in recognition of Nat, of National Day of Prayer, which is May second, two thousand nineteen. Whereas, the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five. And whereas, in nineteen ninety-eight, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in each May as a National Day of Prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas, Congress has declared May second, two thousand nineteen as the official observance of the National Day of Prayer. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faiths to join in united prayer, to give thanks for the blessings received, to request healing for wounds, to ask for guidance for our leaders, and to bring wholeness to the United States and her citizens. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for Americans to pray for what they feel is important for the cities, the county, the state, this country, and our world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes May second, two thousand nineteen as National Day of Prayer in Henry County and encourages all citizens to join in prayer, asking for guidance and strength for our people and our leaders so we may meet the challenges that lay before us with courage, wisdom, and justice. This sixteenth day of April two thousand nineteen, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun. And so, we're going to ask for, for the board to take a picture with some people here and we're going to ask for the people here for the prayer proclamation to come up and have a picture with the board.
Okay. For if you will join in. And now we have, um, thank you. Now we have, uh, accepting the proclamation for autism awareness, our Planning and Economic Development Director, Dante Gibbs. And of course, anyone else who would like to come up, that would be fine. And the final proclamation is, um, for Telecommunicators Month and we have Don Ash and some of his teammates to accept that proclamation.
Chair Wood and Commissioners, thank you for this wonderful opportunity. We are just so grateful for the professionals that represent our nine one-one center. In between the red line and the blue line, there are often referred to a gold line that's never really seen but often heard, and we're so appreciative of those operators and staff that serve our community.
I know you're working so hard behind the scenes, but we very much appreciate you and congratulations for this week. Also regarding National Day of Prayer, we definitely include our, ask our community to continue to pray for our county and our nations. There are several different National Day of Prayer events going on, um, on the square at six o'clock and then in Stockbridge at six thirty, and I think Bethany Baptist sometimes has a day of prayer. And then, of course, for those that are impacted by autism, we will continue to keep you in our thoughts and prayers as well. So, at this time now, we'll move into our next item from the Henry County Fire Department, which is a resolution awarding the annual contract for EMS transport billing services. And we're welcoming up Captain Sam Polk.
Good morning, Chair, or afternoon, I'm used to morning. Good afternoon, Chair Wood, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Um, what we have is a proposal, um, to accept a proposal from Emergency Billing LLC for EMS transport billing services. We submitted an RF, we sent out an RFP, received proposals from five vendors that submitted a compliant proposal with RFP requirements. One proposal was, um, they were scored by a committee of five people. One proposal was scored highest by that committee, that is Emergency Billing LLC. We recommend the award of an annual contract to them. It would be a one-year, um, contract with an option for four one-year renewals, mutually agreed upon renewals. And the, the payment would be six point five percent of actual collections.
Okay. All right. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing nine C and nine, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further comments or discussions? All in favor? Thank you. The resolution passes unanimously. We're now moving to our next agenda item from Public Works DOT, and this is a resolution for the approval of one non-revenue street light at Beale Gardner Parkway and Lester Mill Road. And we welcome up Mr. Ron Burkhalton.
Chair Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Henry County DOT has received a request to place one non-revenue street light at the intersection of Beale Gardner Parkway and Lester Mill Road. Central Georgia EMC will install one class-two LED on an existing pole with a monthly cost of twelve dollars at the intersection. DOT is recognizing the importance of lighting the intersection in order to further improve operation and safety. Henry County DOT requests acceptance of this agreement. Anyone has any questions?
Thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Commissioner Clemens.
Ron, can you guys look into making sure that when we make improvements on new roads in the districts and in the county, that we add streetlights on that?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Commissioner, we are forward on a positive, but may have something to the board.
Perfect. And just so the citizens know what we're talking about, we've had a lot of new road projects come, new streets being done, and they were dark before we started construction and they're still dark afterwards, and I just think that it's a good opportunity that when we're doing new roads, that we bring them up to date, that we don't continue to be a dark county with two-lane roads and no streetlights. So, that's one way to get it done.
And Commissioner, as the deputy county manager said, that, that process has already started.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Second. And a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
The resolution passes unanimously. We're now moving to our planning and zoning items and we'll begin with the very first one, which is RZ nineteen zero-three, which is JWA Ventures, um, two LLC. I'm requesting a rezoning from RA to residential agriculture to C one neighborhood commercial to MU mixed use for the property located at thirty-four fifty-one Highway eighty-one East in District Three. And we, uh, the request is for commercial and single-family residential development and we will invite up Mr. Stacy Jordan-Rudacel as our presenter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members.
Good evening.
The request before you tonight is highlighted in green on the overhead and also in your exhibit books. The property is located on Highway eighty-one between its intersection with North Ola Road and Keys Ferry Road. You can see from the aerial view that this property is in an area that is rather rural at the present time, but there are key developments such as the schools along North Ola Road, a county park, there is a retail directly across the highway to the south from the subject property, and also retail at the intersection with Keys Ferry. The zoning map illustrates this particular instances of zoning in this area between C one and C two. The white shaded area indicates a, an RA zoning. Also, there's a very small part of the subject property that's currently C one, right on the corner of Highway eighty-one and North Ola Road. Our future land use map, which is the county's policy guide, shows a mixed-use, land use designation for the subject property. The survey for the subject property again shows frontage along Highway eighty-one and the fact that the one hundred three point five acres stretches from the intersection with North Ola Road all the way to the intersection with Keys Ferry. The preliminary conceptual site plan shows the assemblage of different uses for this proposed mixed-use development. So, near the corner of the subject property with Highway eighty-one and North Ola Road, there's approximately eleven and a half acres that is supposed to be a retail anchor tenant, possibly a grocery store with associated shops. There are other out parcels along Highway eighty-one. To the rear of the subject property, there's a mixture of single-family residential lots that would correspond with an R two S at twenty-two thousand square feet. To the back corner, northeast corner of the subject property, that area doesn't have good access to the sewer line, so in this area, the applicant is proposing larger lots that would be served by onsite septic with a minimum thirty thousand square feet of, um, lot size. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request. We've noted that for the residential portion, because they're proposing larger lots onsite septic as well as half-acre lots, R two S, their density is less than two dwelling units per acre. The mixed-use, land use category would allow for up to sixteen. Not that they have a right to sixteen, but their request falls within this range. And so, we've determined that the applicant's request is supported by the future land use map. Planning staff recommends approval with conditions. I want to illustrate the conditions because the recommendation of the zoning board is a little different than the staff recommendation that is in your exhibits. And it's only different in a couple of ways, but they delineated the minimum lot area that we have presented tonight in a new condition number one. It also stipulates that the commercial part of this mixed-use development would correspond with a C two and those types of, of permitted uses. The development condition that limits the number of lots, there was a minimum lot size that was added as a part of the zoning advisory board's recommendation to be a minimum of twenty-four hundred square feet of heated floor area. And also, the zoning advisory board recommends that all disturbed areas of residential lots shall be sodded. Typically, staff will recommend some language to account for landscape areas, whether they're present or installed. Because that wasn't included as part of the zoning advisory board's recommendation, if that's something that this board wants to see, that would need to be a part of the motion, and I'd be very pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions before we begin the public hearing? Commissioner Byrne?
Yes, I, I don't think I have this particular printout. Is this something y'all just did today?
Yes, sir. This resolution is based upon the recommendation of the zoning advisory board. When we put together the exhibits for this evening's meeting, it was before we had actually held the zoning advisory board hearing, which occurred on March the twenty-eighth. So, this is not something that's in your exhibit books.
And as it pertains to the C two, will C one cover everything that they want to do?
As far as the grocery and the associated shops, yes, sir, it would.
Okay. Um, I need to get a copy of this.
Yes, sir.
If you could get it printed off for me. That's all for right now.
Okay. Are any other questions from the board? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so... So, what we will do, we will grant, um, ten minutes for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed zoning, including the applicant. And then, we will likewise give ten minutes collectively to the group that is in opposition of that. So, at this time now, we'll invite, um, the groups or individuals that are wishing to speak in opposition, and again, the group in total will have a total of ten minutes. So, you may come forward, including, if there is anyone wishing to come in favor of, including the applicant. This is in favor of. I'm sorry, I may have confused that.
Yeah, the gentleman behind me said, or in front of me said, hey, are you in opposition to this? I said, no, I'm, I'm for it. My name is Andy Welch. I'm, uh, representing the clients in this matter. This is, uh, JWA Ventures LLC. We would ask that we be able to swear in, uh, Mr. Jordan Rudacel, Rudacel Jordan, for the purposes of this, uh, hearing. I have spoken with the county attorney and would like to, to propose that for this evening so I could ask him some questions on the record.
I don't think that's necessary. I think, um, he's got ten minutes to present his case and I, I just don't think we should be swearing people into these zones.
With that, Madam Chair, we, um, what I would like to do is just go ahead and present to, uh, Mr. Rudacel, the affidavit of Michael Bayers, who speaks to the lack of economic significance and use of the current property as it is presently zoned. Um, and I'm going to give it a, an original copy to Stacy and a, and an actual copy to him as well, so that can be included in the record. We already have, we've already filed our constitutional rights letter with the county, so you have that on record as well. The, the request, um, has been presented by staff exceptionally well, they've given you the full dynamics of the, of the case and the application. As you can see, the, the requested rezoning is consistent with the rezonings that have occurred all along North Ola Road. The size of the lots, the nature that it is on sewer, um, this density is below two units the acre, which is, and, which is the typical density for subdivisions that have been approved by the Board of Commissioners in the past for North Ola Road. You'll note that this particular development is on the corner of North Ola Road and on eighty-one highway, so it's on a major, uh, state highway as well as a major, um, road through, uh, the Ola Community, making it a very suitable place for, um, a low-density residential combination commercial activity node. Um, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as you've heard from Stacy, um, and the staff has recommended approval and the, and the planning commission reviewed this and even after the hearings of members from the community who were opposed to the matter, voted unanimously in favor of the recommendation that you have for you. Um, we would ask that you also give a favorable recommendation or a favorable approval, if you will, to this rezoning request. The, what is, a couple of things I wanted to emphasize for you is that there is an exceptional amount of road improvements that is required by state DOT and will likewise be required by Henry County DOT in order for the commercial establishment to be built as well as to provide access for the residential development. That is going to be a substantial amount of money, uh, at least a half a million dollars worth of value that's going to be added to the intersection of, uh, North Ola Road and along Highway eighty-one in terms of right-of-way, in terms of, um, set-asides, and in terms of also road improvements, actual lanes being built, turn lanes, um, on the property, uh, sorry, on the, on the highway. With all of these, uh, with all of these requirements that are being placed by the county and by state DOT, this will make this, uh, an exceptionally good development for the community. The, having a grocery store located there will also be helpful into providing lowering trip traffic throughout the eighty-one corridor, but also providing for a central commercial node right there at the Ola, uh, community in close proximity to the school systems that are already there, providing a convenient location for a grocery store. providing a convenient location for a grocery store and other amenities. So, with that, Madam Chair, there are some members that would like to speak. If there is any residual time, I'll come back up and fill in that time with some last-minute comments for the presentation. But with that, I'll let some other members speak that would like to speak in favor of the proposal.
Chair and Council, good evening. My name is Evan Conder. I'm the applicant with Jim Wilson and Associates. The subsidiary is JD Bay Ventures, too. I appreciate the opportunity to present our project this evening. I won't reflect too much on what Mr. Welch had said, but I will comment on specifically the grocer. While I can't confirm to you tonight who the grocer is, I can tell you that it's the largest employee-owned company in the United States. The grocer is of high quality. It offers fresh produce, pharmacy-related items, a deli, various soft goods. The, excuse me, the development will provide an incredible community enhancement and outstanding economic use, increasing both the ad valorem tax base that doesn't exist on the property today, as well as sales tax for the county. The grocer will employ approximately 120 to 150 people, with the ancillary shops and out parcels employing another 75 to 100 people. We believe that this development is a sound economic decision for Henry County for many decades to come. The ancillary shops and out parcels will consist of uses such as restaurants, service-related uses, offices, and other uses consistent with a community shopping center. Furthermore, we are providing a multi-use path, which was outlined on the colored site plan rendering. That'll connect to the master plan as well as the schools to the north, future development to the east, and will offer interpartial connected development, convenient and safe for children, families to gather for ice cream after the football games. Jim Wilson and Associates has been around for 40 years. We've developed high-quality, fine, commercial shopping centers, shopping malls, and other master plan developments in the southeast. Our design and building materials are aesthetically pleasing, of the utmost quality, and will enhance the community and surrounding areas. We thank you for the opportunity to present our project. We ask for your affirmative vote and look forward to any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Harris. I represent the Val de Vieso family, which is the property owner right now. Ms. Val de Vieso and her mother, grandmother, grandfather have owned this property for over 100 years. What we've asked for is consistent with the future land use plan, as staff indicated. The plan was adopted only five months ago by this board. And in fact, the future land use plan, again, as staff indicated, allows up to 16 units of mixed-use residential. We're asking for one and a half units an acre. We're asking for more than 10 times less than what we could have asked for. That's a double negative, but the point is, we're asking for one and a half. The land use plan allows up to 16. The residential portion of this request also asks for less density than this board approved in February for North Ola Henry 163, which came before here for residential development. And you guys approved, I believe it was 114, 150-something lots, but the density on that was, was less than what we're asking for. I'm sorry, more than what we were asking for. And that property was a mile north of this property. It didn't back, none of the lots backed up to Highway 81, none of the lots backed up to commercial, as is the case here. We could have rightfully, I believe, requested R3 or even R4, but we're prepared to accept R2. I know there's those in opposition that would prefer the land just stay, just like it is and not be developed. I would submit to this board that's unreasonable. Mr. Henderson, Ms. Val de Vieso's father, donated, didn't sell, but donated the land for the elementary school just north of this property. Mr. Norman, who is her grandfather, donated land and actually constructed Sharon Baptist Church on North Ola Road. He also willed 50 acres to the church that wasn't, it was up the road a little further, but he willed them 50 acres with provision that they could sell that 50 acres and capitalize the church for some time period with the sale of that property. So, the, the family has been good stewards of the land. They pay taxes on this land for longer than probably anybody in this room has been alive, over 100 years. They're entitled to a reasonable use of the property. We think this petition is more than reasonable. All we're asking is that you treat us fairly and that you approve the petition as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think we have made an abundantly good case for the rezoning request that's been presented to you in its application for mixed use. We would ask that you give it a favorable approval, and we acknowledge that the staff has these conditions that are on the screen. These conditions are acceptable to the applicant and the landowner for moving forward. And so, with that, we would ask that you vote in favor of the rezoning application. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Okay, thank you. This is filled in the public hearing, so is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Again, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll now begin to acknowledge the groups or individuals that would like to speak in opposition. If you will begin to come forward and again state your name, be sensitive to the person behind you. Again, it will be a total of 10 minutes collective for the group. So, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Dobbs. I live on South Ola. Me and many of my neighbors have been there for over 16 years. We moved to Ola because of the, of the country feel that it offered versus the city. We know progress is coming. It's already coming. This information is new to us. I've never seen this. I was not aware of the 2030 extended plan for the land use here at the time I moved in. If I did, I probably would have never moved here. I'm just asking for the consideration of maybe further conditions, as these do sound very reasonable. One maybe being no clear cutting of the land. If there's an opportunity to save at least 20 to 25% of the original forest land to help keep some green space, I think that would be a small price to pay for the commercialism that's coming into town. Your consideration is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dan Nukamola. This morning, 11:30 on a local Facebook page, there was a post about a cow being loose on 81 at South Ola. That's why I moved out there. That's why I bought land out there last century, to get away from over-commercialization, over-pavement. A lot of people moved out there for that, knowing groceries were seven miles away. I look at Lovejoy. That used to be a gas station on a corner of a highway and a quote, "minor arterial road." Then they put a Publix in there and a couple of out parcels, and look at it now. Commercialism, like a cancer, took over that whole area. But, you know, as she said, if you're going to allow it, and I'm pretty sure you are, whatever conditions you can put on there to make sure we get quality development, I like the way you're leaning towards the C1 or the C2, Commissioner Barham, clear cutting. Make sure they finish the sidewalks. We have too many sidewalks that go nowhere in Henry County. And, you know, get us something better than gas stations, nail salons, and discount dollar stores. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure y'all are having enough of me. I'm the one that's been flagging you guys with emails. The rest of them can't see, but on these picture, picture board here, I have pictures of the progression of the traffic that occurs every morning, about two hours, from seven something in the morning all the way till nine. This runs from the Ola School where the proposed development is, all the way down to Bethany, bunker-to-bunker traffic, minimum speed of five miles an hour. Now, if there were to be an emergency vehicle that needed to get either up or down, there are no places to pull over here. So, the emergency vehicle is going to be riding on the opposite side of the road for anywhere from a mile to five miles, just, just that alone, in and of itself. This is Henry County. This is Ola. This is what we want to see in Ola. We don't want to see this, where we've got these houses, one slung on top of the other, they're so close that there's nowhere for parking cars. Yes, they have a right to develop their property, but let's go with C1 where they have a minimum and we don't have all this mixed use going on, because once you put in mixed use, you condemn the county. And from there on out, we're going to have townhouses and apartments all up and down 81, and we still can't handle it, because even though we have a highway overlay, it's not there yet. We have maybe six years to go before we get an extra road or an extra lane out there. And the million dollars they're proposing is not going to take us from Ola all the way down to Bethany or the highway.
Thank you.
Greetings, Board. I'm Kathy Bell, and I live in the Ola Sandy Ridge District. I'm also a Henry County employee with the bus terminal, with special needs children. I am on a bus around 5:40 every morning, transporting child, picking them up all over the county. I have lived in the Ola area for 50 years. I've watched it grow. I've watched it take away from my children who grew up there. Went to JB Henderson. JB Henderson now is a school for children with special needs. Ola High School, Ola Middle School, and Ola Elementary are overcrowded. To get your child transported, it may take an hour and a half to two hours to go from Locust Grove to Ola. From Locust Grove, town, anywhere, it takes two hours to transport that one child on a bus. That's too long for a six-year-old or a three-year-old. To drive on 81, if you've ever been there, you will wait sometimes 20 minutes to get back on the highway. We are not equipped for this kind of project. If we want to build a better life for our children, and that's what we did, we come to Ola to build a better life so our children will know what it is to live in the country, to have their cows, their chickens, their horses, their ducks, and goats if they wanted them. How many children in here have that opportunity, other than see it in a book or see it on a film? We ask you as our commissioners, and we elected you to govern us, to protect our county, to protect our children, our youth. And Ola is not ready for this traffic. It takes you from Key's Ferry nearly 45 minutes to get up to Mount, to South Bethel or North Bethel. And from there to get to McDonough, it may take you another 25 minutes. Think about this. We are behind on building our roads. We're behind on our schools. Where are we going to put these children? Schools are not equipped. We do not have enough teachers. So, think about this when we are voting on anything in our county. What's going to make us better? If we wanted to have larger land, an acre and a half is not much land. They need at least five to 10 acres so a child can enjoy what it is to be free, to ride their bicycle, to roam, get their feet dirty, or whatever it takes to be a child. That's what we want to build in Henry County. We want to build families, homes that are not going to sit empty. And I do, like I say, I ride the road, 42 Highway. All we have are concrete buildings that have taken a place of where somebody could have a good family life. Please consider this when you vote. And again, I am Kathy Bell, and I live in Ola in Sandy Ridge District on Peaksfield Road, right off of Key's Ferry. So, I know what our traffic's like. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Myers off of Pine Tree Drive. I was at the zoning meeting, and I am here for you now to request your consideration against this proposal. I was very disheartened at the last meeting of the lack of consideration and the fact that it appeared the deal had already been made before it even went up to discussion. Mr. Barham, I have called your office twice to speak with you. I have not received a returned phone call. The lack of concern on things that affect your constituents is very, very unapologetic and unethical. I vote against this. We are asking as your constituents and telling you what we do not want. Members of this community did not have the opportunity to attend the rezoning meetings due to time. Many adults who work in this community and pay the taxes from when you guys held these meetings were not able to attend. I will move the floor.
Thank you.
Rusty Perkins, 75 Wallace Road out in Villa Rica, Georgia. I'm down here on another issue. Part of it being about it nationally, I know that's, we're not getting into that right now, but the time, I've been down, or my family's been down here since 1985, and this, this county has steadily been putting more and more cars on the roads. You're talking about 100 and some odd acres of building another residential site just to put more cars out on the road in an area that don't need it. You need to be worried more about your roads and getting a traffic set where people can go from A to B instead of being worried about empty shelves of warehouses and more residential and a food chain that can't be mentioned. I mean, if it's that important and they're that good of a company, why not mention them? See whether or not it puts it to the test of whether or not those of Henry County want them here.
Thank you.
I also wanted to give you, I did have some petitions signed.
If you can give it to the clerk, thank you.
It's not a real formal petition. There's also comments on the petition from Henry County businesses that, you know, once again are concerned with this. And I would like to ask, I'm not sure, my emails may have gone in the garbage. I don't know, you know, because I sent a lot of them. I apologize, just trying to get your attention and had to do a lot of research and try to go through all the, the building codes and stuff, but as it says, if the piece of property can be developed the way it is, it can be developed the way it is. It might not be commercial, it might not be mixed use, but you can still put something on it.
Thank you. I was inspired. Thank you. Okay, well, we thank you all for your comments regarding this matter. So, we will now invite the applicant back up, and then we will address any questions and comments from the board. So, are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barham?
Stacy, looking back at the staff report on the residential, I didn't see anything that, that identified what type houses. And I guess I need to make that part of the conditions.
Sir, you're certainly able to do that, but this property is within the highway corridor overlay district, which would require brick, stone, stucco, and so forth. So, the highway corridor is going to cover a lot of this.
It's going to cover a lot of that.
Yes, sir. In addition to that, the mixed-use development itself has certain supplemental standards that would have to be met, such as minimum 5% open space and so forth like that.
Would you take us through the overlay?
Yes, sir.
And just kind of describe what they're going to be required to do?
Yes, sir.
I mean, this is going to be a sidewalk from this North Ola all the way to the school.
Yes, sir. So, not only is there going to be a sidewalk, but it's a minimum 10-foot wide sidewalk. So, this would be along the entire frontage of the development. And the development is proposed to extend all the way down Highway 81 from Key's Ferry to the intersection with North Ola and all the way up the frontage of the subject property all the way up North Ola to where the subject property ends.
It joins the school property.
That, that joins the school property. That's absolutely right. In addition to that, there's a minimum 10-foot wide landscape strip that is required to include pedestrian lighting, street trees, and so forth. In addition to that, there's a required designated pedestrian walkway that's to connect the sidewalk with each of the structures. And the commercial area is supposed to be connected to the residential area so that there's interpartial connectivity. The mixed-use supplemental standards requires a minimum 5% of green space. Well, it's a 103.5 acre property. They're actually proposing 11.5 acres of green space, so they're exceeding their 5%. In addition to green space, there's a 1% of the floor area that's required to be open space. So, there are all of these requirements that is meant to ensure that this is a quality development, but for that reason, we didn't recommend a lot of zoning conditions.
So, it'll all be covered in the overlay?
Yes.
The other thing that I would, I gave you a picture earlier. If you would put that up, I want the citizens to see what used to be on that corner. Some may be interested and some not, but this is Ms. Eileen Henderson's old store. And I remember going in there, getting the coke and peanuts and that sort of thing. And my understanding, I mean, talking to my brother, they used to build wagons in the top of that thing, and there was a ball field behind there. You know, we mentioned that that, that family had been a pillar of the community down there for years. And I wanted to know how, how long they had actually owned the property. Now, I heard a hundred... they had actually owned the property. Now, I heard 100 years today, but I went down to the tax assessor's office, and, and they looked at the codes, and they said they've never seen the codes go back that far. So we had to go to the courthouse and get the records. But it indicated that this family has owned this property since 1882, some between 1882 and 1884. And I just think that's kind of neat. But they have been a pillar of the community. They did a lot for people. And one thing they didn't mention, I know they did the school down there, and I think Ms. Eglan probably donated most of the stuff to build the school, but they didn't mention the ballpark. So all the ball fields was actually donated by that family as well. So just wanted to mention that. The other thing, Patrick, I wanted to just ask you, and, you know, we deny this thing tonight. We got it up to, to a good thing here. What happens if we deny this?
Well, an applicant for rezoning who is dissatisfied with the result can always file a lawsuit. And we would have to then, you know, present evidence about the impact of the zoning on the property and the, the, the facts and evidence that support the decision you make. And what you've got here is a proposal that conforms to your future land use map, satisfies the goals of your comprehensive plan. You have a recommendation from your resident experts for approval, being your staff, and you have a recommendation from your zoning advisory board for approval. So it really puts you in a difficult spot. That's kind of the perfect storm for a bad outcome in court. And if, if you have a bad outcome in court, your opportunity to negotiate these conditions and other concessions from the developer really, really go away. So today is your best opportunity to get concessions from the developer to make the project a better project.
And we could end up with 1,600 square foot home.
You could end up with whatever the minimums of the zoning ordinance are.
And it's 1,600. And, and we talked about doing the 2,400 square foot. But that's about all I have right now. I'm just, I'm, I'm, Pat, make a motion.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, now the floor is now open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for rezoning from R.A. Residential, Agricultural, and C1 Neighborhood Commercial to M.U. Mixed Use for the property located 340-51 Highway 81 East and Land Lot 145 of the 8th District. The property consists of 103.56 acres, and the request is for commercial and single-family residential homes. And y'all have seen the conditions that they put up in the resolution, and I would like to add some conditions. Johnny Wilson, he had had some reservations about the intersection. And I know South Ola is on Splash Five list, and hopefully that's, that's going to come to pass, and that'll help a lot. But one thing, too, before we get into this, is, is 81's going to be widened. And we've already got it working down two, but let me go ahead and finish with our motion. I want to add these conditions. Number six to read, house shall be a minimum of 2,400 heated space with side-inch garages. Developer shall preserve at 30-foot of property along the eastern property boundary where used for commercial purposes for connection extensions of Keys Ferry Road if the construction is within five years of the date of the zoning approval. Number eight, developer will contribute $20,000 toward, toward the South Ola realignment to be paid 30 days of the request by the county provided. However, that payment is subject to the county entering into a bona fide contract for the construction of South Ola realignment within two years of the date of this zoning approval. And that's my motion.
Okay, there is a motion with conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Are there further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now moving to our next public hearing from planning and zoning, and this is ULDC-am-19-01, which is an ordinance by Henry County to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-05 regarding wireless communication facilities of small cell technology within public right-of-way. And we'll ask Mr. Stacey Rudisell to make that presentation as well.
Good evening, Chair Wood. Commissioners?
Good evening.
The, the item before you tonight is a county-initiated ordinance amendment. In 2017, the county adopted an ordinance amendment to recognize small cell technology in the right-of-way. As a part of that amendment, we made a differentiation between small cell technology that's located in the right-of-way adjacent to residentially-zoned properties versus non-residentially-zoned properties. In September of last year, the Federal Communications Commission passed a ruling, and that ruling didn't make that differentiation between properties that are zoned residential and properties that are zoned non-residential. Also, the state of Georgia had considered House Bill 184, which would reach a, an understanding with representatives of the major telecommunications companies. So in response to these new federal rules and the upcoming state ordinance amendment, we are presenting this county-initiated ordinance amendment before you tonight. And it does just a few things, and I'll go over those things with you. It, it eliminates that differentiation that was made in 2017 between properties that were zoned residential and properties that were zoned commercial. And it just allows these small cell technologies to be located in the right-of-way as long as it meets certain conditions. We've reduced the height that would be allowed administratively from 70 feet to 50 feet. We've recognized the upcoming state law. We are proposing to correct a Scribner's error, and we're proposing to include a statement that said that we will comply with applicable federal and state law, and that we require a pre-application meeting before moving forward with the administrative approval of this small cell technology. And that is all. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Can you, okay, can you remind us of why, or what the difference was, adjacent to residential and non-adjacent? Was, what was that distinction is the question?
Yes, ma'am. We wouldn't allow it to be approved administratively adjacent to residentially-zoned property.
All right. Commissioner Wilson?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the last time you presented this, we had some questions about how many of these towers are we expecting? How far are they going to be apart? And I don't think no one was able to answer the question. Are we still, we have no idea how far apart these are going to be, or?
One of the things that this ordinance does in recognizing federal rules and state law is to allow for these sorts of criteria to be handled through the state law. And the state law, if I recall correctly, does include a, a separation requirement, at least at the time that it was being debated at the State House. So there, at the time, there was a separation, but I would need to find it in here to find the exact distance for you at this time.
Other questions? Commissioner Clemmons?
I think that's good. Commissioner Wilson, do you have a recommendation for how far they should be? I agree with you.
Well, they couldn't answer that question I asked last time they brought this up. Were they going to be 50 feet apart, 100 feet apart? But there was no, there was no definitive answer.
You want to make a recommendation?
So, I mean, we don't, I don't think, you said 50 feet tall. Is that, is that the minimum and the maximum?
That is the maximum. Yes, sir.
Can they put them on telephone poles?
Yes, sir.
Stacey doesn't make any recommendations regarding the distance?
They do. They do, but I would need to, to find it in here because I don't have it committed to memory at this time.
Commissioner Wilson, just to kind of add a little bit to that, to Stacey's presentation. In most cases, the distance between poles are equal to the height, the maximum height of the pole between, so in radius. Technically, if that was the case, yes. But that is not a requirement to have them 50 feet apart. They could be 150 feet apart. It could, it just, it just depends. And in most cases with the small cell technology, they attach them to existing infrastructure.
All right. Other questions from the board? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, and of course, if there are other questions and comments, we'll come back to those. So at this time, we will grant 10 minutes to anyone wishing to speak in favor of this, and then likewise, we'll give a total of 10 minutes to anyone wishing to speak in opposition. So at this time, we invite anyone that's wishing to speak in favor to please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll now invite up anyone who's wishing to speak in opposition to please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to please come forward now. Okay, well, that concludes our public hearing. So again, at this time, are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
I understand that we're following the state ordinance, but sometimes the state stuff may not be good for all 159 counties. And so I really would not like to see this just be put based on the state. But can we have it, can we put in a clause that still has to come back to us because what's public right-of-way now and what it looks like, just what happened with Ola, what looks like this today may not look like this 10 years from now, and we've already approved it, that it can go into public right-of-way. So I would still like to see, to make sure that the board has some oversight before we just allow this to happen. We're growing. We're changing. You know, it looks like every meeting, a community is changing. So I wouldn't want to just approve this the way it is. I still would like them to be able to come back to the board so that we can have conversations with our community, whether they want, want it there, and what does it look like?
And Commissioner, I would need to get some clarification from the county attorney, but I think that we would have to treat them the same as any other utility.
So the nature of the, the FCC rulings that, that these ordinances, this new ordinance is based on, the, the whole idea of it sadly is to limit your authority to refuse the communications towers. And that, the federal government has imposed that as, as part of their regulatory oversight over, over communications. The, now, there are some, there are some sort of safeguards, some safe harbors in all of this, one of which is if, if there are cell tow, or if there are these towers within your right-of-way, and you relocate your right-of-way, you widen your road, they, we can require them to pay reasonable relocation costs or tell them to get out. But, you know, as far as sort of the aesthetics and the communities that don't want them, these rules are specifically designed to override that. So the federal government has decided that our need for wireless communications outweighs our desire not to have towers. So could you require them to come to you? I, I think you could. You're going to have to, I mean, you're going to run into problems when you're faced with an application that meets all the standards, and you have a room full of angry people because the F, the law probably isn't going to allow you to successfully deny those applications. So you may be setting yourself up for failure. That's, that's the concern I would have. But, you know, if, if that's the will of the board, we can do it and, and sort of roll those dice and see what happens. But you're going to, you're really going to set yourself up, I think, for, for some disappointment.
I would just like to say that I hope that the rest of the board heard what I heard. This is the federal government limiting our authority in Henry County.
Yes.
I have a real concern with that.
Right.
I also have a concern with that they get to decide what happens in my community where I pay taxes and put cell towers all over the place.
Yep.
So I'd rather take my chances and put a condition in there that they can't do it without us saying so than to just say you can do whatever you want to do in Henry County. So I just, you know, I just want to make sure that I reiterate what I heard and make sure that's what I heard.
Yes. And that is, that is, you know, that's a, that's a harsh way of describing this rule. And I did it that way on purpose. I wanted you to be aware that
Yeah.
The FCC and the federal government really are sort of stepping into what are traditionally local government decisions, but they've decided, they, they did so years ago with satellite TVs. You know, the, the little satellite you get for DirecTV, there's rules out there that say you can't refuse people putting those up. We value those types of communications so highly that local governments can't refuse them. That's the decision.
And the people that make the laws got a lot of money for it.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, my thoughts are we're concerned about aesthetics. And what other conditions can we consider that would allow something greater than 50 feet, you know, without having to create a lot of administrative work? But have we actually thought about some other recommendations based on what we see is happening in our community and what we're projecting to happen through the comprehensive land use plan? So again, I think we are concerned a lot about this 50-feet, you know, ruling that we were talking about. But is there any way to condition that to maybe, I don't know what that would look like, but that would be something that would help with aesthetics?
And Chair Wood, let me just say that the way the code is written today administratively, we would approve it up to 70 feet. But because the state law would limit it to 50, that that's a reduction in the height of that imposition.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
We, we approved a similar resolution a couple of years ago. Wasn't it a couple of years ago, or was it last year?
Yes, sir.
Was any of this technology installed after that resolution was approved, anywhere in the county?
There was a, a tower that was installed on Fairview Road very close to Santa Fe. And I do believe that it was 70 feet tall.
Okay. Because when, I remember in that particular presentation, they said that they would install on existing poles. So that's not the case anymore?
Well, the state law is written to give an incentive for these telecommunications companies to collate on existing poles. There are other rules that are a little more stringent if the telecommunications company needs to put in a new pole in the right-of-way.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas?
My question is, when these towers are no longer in use and they're in place, to have them removed or to relocate them there, is there a way to protect us from having to pay fees for that or have them pay those fees?
Yes, the state law anticipates that, and it requires that a tower that's no longer being used be removed.
At whose cost? I'm trying to figure out, at whose cost?
That would be at the cost of the operator. And if they don't, then the county can take it down and charge them the actual cost plus a penalty.
Well, I know there are other areas, not in Georgia in particular, but I do know in other states, because I have a friend who's dealing with that same issue. Old tower, company going out of business, own their land, and stuck. And it's too expensive for them to take it down themselves.
One of the differences between this small cell technology and a regular monopole that one might see on a private property is that they're not so high, and they're not so intrusive, and they don't require a 30-foot foundation that would be that much more difficult to remove.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons, and then we'll come to Commissioner Holmes. Are you done? Okay. Commissioner Clemmons? I'm good. Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Is there an opportunity for us to benefit from franchise fees?
Yes, I understand that we can treat them just like a utility. So I'll defer to the county attorney.
Sadly, Georgia law grants cities, but not counties, the right to collect those franchise fees. I'd love to know why. I don't know why, but that's generally the way the law is set up.
Commissioner Holmes, anything else?
No.
Okay. Regarding the small cells that are around residential, had you all considered some type of condition that would account, required to be camouflaged or something like that? So because, you know, I've seen where they can do some creative things so that it doesn't look so much.
Absolutely. The, the code that we have today that to date is applicable in the non-residential areas requires it to be of a muted color and so forth. Not necessarily that it has to be camouflaged per se, such as a flagpole or some sort of shielding like a like a tree or something like that, but it does give us a handle so that it's not just a, a bare, plastic, bright orange tube running up a, a, a pole. We don't allow that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemens?
Have you guys consulted with the city? Because we do have four cities, and if we're allowing one thing and the city's doing something else, if they come up, you know, you can be, I can be in my house and unincorporated and go two houses, and I'm in the city of Stockbridge, or two houses this way, and I'm in the city of McDonough. So have we coordinated? Because if we make, this is something that we need to be talking about as a county as a whole, although I'm, I'm not supporting it at all, but, you know, we definitely need to be looking at how this looks in the entire county, especially since we're permitting this now with this, with the way this is set in a residential, adjacent to residential areas.
I can tell you that for myself, I have not found out from the cities how far they are with modifying each of the city's ordinances.
Good question. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion. Again, the floor is now open for a motion. Seeing none, hearing none, it does not pass. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the next public hearing, which is RZ seventeen-one-five by High Breast Properties, requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural to residential suburban for property located at thirty-four-twenty-four and thirty-two-sixty-two Jonesboro Road in District Two, and the request is for a single-family and multifamily residential subdivision. So welcome up Ms. Nunez for the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Wood and Borman.
Good evening.
The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property located at thirty-four-twenty-four and thirty-two-sixty-two Jonesboro Road, as highlighted in green in your exhibit books and as seen on the overhead, from RA, residential agricultural, to RS, residential suburban, for a single-family and multifamily residential development. I do want to make clear that the applicant has submitted a constitutional challenge letter along with this request. The subject property was originally associated with two separate rezoning requests, one for one hundred and twenty-eight plus or minus acres, and a second for thirty plus or minus acres, which included a mixed-use, commercial, and age-restricted residential components. These cases were originally heard by the zoning advisory board on January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Since then, the original rezoning request has since been updated by the applicant by incorporating both the properties into the current new request as per the updated site plan dated February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. So this new request is only for residential. The subject property has a medium-density residential future land use designation, which allows for up to six dwelling units per net acre. The development as now proposed by the applicant has a density of two-point-four-six dwelling units per gross acre. So while the applicant has not provided to us a net density calculation, the development will be required to comply with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map designation by not exceeding six dwelling units per net acre. Also, the subject property is within the Highway Corridor Overlay District and will be required to comply with those development standards. Due to the applicant submitting a change to their original request, staff recommends the following two conditions. And these conditions have been derived from the original zoning advisory board conditions back in two thousand and eighteen, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay, are there any questions before we begin the public hearing? Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
I don't have a question, but I do have a statement for the residents that are here from this area. They brought this, I think, to the board, to the planning and zoning board back in two thousand and seventeen. Is that when they brought it initially?
January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Initially. Okay, so the zoning, I think the zoning of the property, the sign went up the end of two thousand and seventeen?
We initially received the application in two thousand and seventeen, but they were heard by the ZAB in January.
Okay.
They were ta, this case was tabled
Okay.
for, for quite some time.
So it was, it was brought before the zoning of, the application went in, in two thousand and seventeen, the signs went up, everybody in the community knew about it, it was public records what they were proposing. So November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, we immediately had a community meeting in reference to this. They went before the planning and zoning board, we had another meeting February first, two thousand and eighteen, about this. And then again, February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we had a town hall meeting, and we discussed this as well. So I just want the constituents that are here to know those minutes, and those meetings, and those things we talked about, we have them written down. So you can get up, state your case, but we're all on one accord.
Other comments from the board? Okay, well, we will begin the public hearing, and we will grant ten minutes to those wishing to speak in favor, and then ten minutes to those wishing to speak in opposition. And in speaking in favor, we welcome the applicant to, to come in as well. So at this time, those wishing to speak in favor, please come.
Commissioners, thank you. Staff, thank you as well. Development is always difficult.
Your name?
Uh, sorry. Thank you. My name is John Palmer. I live in District Two of Henry County. I want to put this picture up first to allay any fears. I know it's very difficult whenever you're looking at a map for development, that things kind of run together, but this is the, the map this proposed. You can see in the dark green areas, those are all areas of open space, areas that we're leaving untouched, areas that the developer is setting aside for, for, for uses of the community and not putting homes on. So it's not a very dense development, but I did want to start off with a, with a couple of things. I'm glad you mentioned, we're not doing commercial. This is a single-family development. Actually, we want to do only single-family. We'd rather not do a multifamily component to this development. The development is actually, if you can see on the drawing, where my pen is here, that is Crystal Lake Village, and it's directly across the street from us, from this property, and we would like to do the exact same thing that is in Crystal Lake Village, which is a fine community, a very nice community, and provides great quality homes for people in the community. The proposed development will be private. It'll be a gated community. The developer that is here does not want to do a subdivision that is low income. He's planning to do a private, exclusive community. The homes will be ranging from two-fifty to three-fifty, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The developer's proposing a craftsman-style look to the development, which will be consistent with the Highway Corridor Overlay District. I appreciate Stacy earlier for mentioning that. We're in the same overlay district, in District Two. So we'll have to meet very stringent guidelines on the aesthetics, on the brick, the general look of the development with landscaping, multi-use trails. Again, we're proposing more than the minimum size. The minimum square footage in this district is eighteen-hundred square feet. That's the minimum square foot that's in Crystal Lake Village, directly across the street from us, and we're proposing two-thousand-four-hundred square feet, which is six-hundred square feet more than the zoning code, and six-hundred square feet more than is allowed for in Crystal Lake Village. As you can see, again, the development has a large amount of open space, has amenities, has a walkable feel to it. The recently approved future land use map that was talked about earlier designates this area for six dwelling units per acre. Our development is, as we stated, two-point-five dwelling units per acre gross. The net will be around three-point-five, which is consistent with Crystal Lake Village across the street. Crystal Lake Village is about three-point-six net dwelling units per acre. I did want to just follow up and, and, and discuss the planning commission recommended approval for this development at four-point-eight-nine dwelling units per acre. We're not asking for that. The planning commission recommended approval of commercial. We're not asking for that. We're not asking necessarily for multifamily at all. We really want to do just a private gated, single-family community with homes ranging from about two-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I'd like to reserve my time in case there's anything else that we need to discuss.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone else wishing to speak in favor, we do invite you to come up now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor, we do invite you to come now. Okay? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? That group will be given a total of ten minutes collectively, so we ask that you please come forward and state your name, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jonathan Lapointe. I live in District Two, and I'll try to be short. I apologize. I wear braces, so I sound really strange. After going to several commission meetings and seeing the way the initial residential rezoning was just handled here and several other hearings, I gotta say, with all due respect to Mr. Drucksetter, you could just probably record that little monologue about, "They're gonna sue us," and you guys could just hit a button, because it's obvious that this is just Kabuki Theater. It's gonna happen, and you guys are gonna let it happen because they're gonna sue us. We've lived down here for decades. I've lived here for thirty years. There are people back here that have lived for God knows how many generations. This is community. This is our community. But we're making, it's, it's obvious that the developers now run our communities, that people that don't live here, that have no intention of ever doing anything other than making a buck off of us, can roll right on in and say, "Hey, we're gonna sue you. Oh, by the way, here's a couple of trees. Have, have some lube before we bend you over." This is a farce. I'm angry. A lot of us are angry. We would love for someone to actually stand up. Sometimes things are dangerous. They have to be done, though. Sometimes things are uncomfortable, but they have to be done. Let's start making this county somewhere developers don't want to have to come to, because they're gonna have to fight for it. We're tired of this being handed to them, and you guys say, "Hey, tough. We know it's your community, but they've got the money and they've got the lawyers." All right? I weep for this county. I watched what happened to Clayton County. I lived in Clayton when I lived on a dirt road with cows and three-hundred acres of farms. Now, no one will live in Clayton County, because this exact same thing happened to Clayton. And I moved down here because this was a godsend. I get to go back to the farms, and now here, it's all happening again. I apologize, but I'm fired up. This is my life. My wife's a doctor. I'm a professional. I'm a mechanic with Delta. We are the type of young thirty-somethings with children you want in this county, and we are being pushed out because houses and density and tax revenue is more important than community. So raise your hands, say aye, pass this garbage so we can all go home. I'm sorry, but this, this was my life, and now I gotta start my life over again, because people keep taking my life from me. And then they tell me on the internet, "You want woods? Go find woods." This is city now, boy. I'm sick of it.
Thank you.
Rusty Perkins, Seventy-Five Wallace Road, Villarica, Georgia. Once again, we're just moving to the other side of the county now. Still got the same issues with the traffic. Take care of the roads, not to mention the fact, I did a quick map quest on this, two-point-two miles from Nash Farm Battlefield. Imagine that. Step on the historical toes. It's okay. We don't mind being called the boogeyman, because we will continue doing what we do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shola Adani, and I live in District Two, specifically in Crystal Lake Village. And when I look at this map, I can actually see that entire neighborhood from my living room. And this is appalling. Like everyone else has said, I moved away from a completely different city, running away from this, and this being right behind my door is actually scary. I don't see more roads, and I don't see parks. I don't see anything that would service our local neighborhood. What I see is homes. So I don't know how you guys are working for us. I mean, I appreciate what Commissioner Clemens has been doing, because I've been to every town hall that you've held. However, it doesn't seem like our voices are being heard. So I'm curious, I mean, what does it even matter that we come to a gathering like this and there are concerns? Is this just for documentation's sake, or just for it to be on the record, where you actually just go back and do whatever you want to do, or actually please the, the developers, you know, at the expense of the constituents? Just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you guys excuse my appearance. I've been in the yard. I got PTSD with thirty-six years in the military, so it calms me. But this here, it disturbs me. I stay in Traditions at
What's your name, sir?
Sean Connors, I'm sorry. I stay at Traditions at Crystal Lake, in which now Section B is going to be another three, four hundred houses. And now, we talking across the street, there are going to be another three, four hundred houses. My problem is the traffic, no roads. Everybody talking about houses, but where are we gonna go? It takes forty minutes from jump, from Traditions at Crystal Lake to get to Seventy-Five now. And with more roads, I mean, with more traffic, it's gonna be crazy. Two hours just to get to Seventy-Five. But nobody's concerned about that, because y'all don't live there. But we live there, but nobody hears us. You know, it's just like, Traditions at Crystal Lake, that, that Portion B, they're supposed to have a road, another entry point, and we got a, a map that shows that it has to have an entry point, because if it doesn't, then we stuck, like Chuck. And we just put our cars on the road, and can't no builders get through. But we don't want to do that. But it's our right, because it's a public road. So if we park all our cars on the road, can't no trucks get through. So then, what, what are we going to do? Because we live there. And that's what I'm asking y'all. What are y'all going to do for us to help us? Because we pay taxes, y'all work for us, but y'all don't hear us. Y'all sit up there, and it is recorded, but the deals are done before we even walk out the door. So i- it's like in the army, just do what you're told.
Brace your socks.
And go and do it. And I don't mean to be mad, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to be ugly. It's just that I moved here to get away from all of this traffic and all of this commercialism. But it's coming, but the roads ain't being built.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Felisa McKinney. I live at Crystal Lake at Traditions. I'm District Two. And just as everyone here that's in opposition of this project, it's very disheartening to sit here and look at this board. Half of you aren't paying attention when people come up here and talk. Some are looking at the ceiling, some are looking at their phone, and it's more than obvious that nobody is really concerned about what we're concerned about. But we also have to take into consideration, just as my neighbor said, we live in Traditions, and they're getting ready to build another two hundred houses with one egress, one egress, and now you're getting ready to put another two hundred houses across the street on a two-lane road, where we have just around the corner on McCullough, Dutch Town Elementary and the high school. So to Elementary and the high school. So to travel that road in the morning with school buses and people trying to get to work, it's outlandish. And to add to that, more people, more cars? I mean, you know, Ms. Clemens, you sit here, you talk about all the meetings that we've had to discuss this, and there are meeting minutes, but are all of those things being taken into consideration when we do this? We don't even have enough police to patrol our neighborhoods. Shall we add another 600 people that can't be policed, and we don't know what's going on in our community? I mean, this is ludicrous. We're living in a county where we pay the highest taxes in Georgia, and we get nothing. We get nothing from our elected officials.
Thank you, ma'am. The time has expired.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, that concludes our public hearing, and we invite the applicant back to address any questions or comments from the board. So are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, here are none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Before I make a motion, I want to just say to all of the constituents that came forth, I'm just as disappointed that you are, that I've not seen you in the meetings that we have had.
I'm there.
If you've been in, if you've been in the meetings, then you had an opportunity to make an input.
Excuse me, sir. Okay, Commissioner Clemens has the floor, please.
I do my best to create opportunities for citizens' input. If you send me an email, I respond. If you call me, I call you back. So I do my best to make sure that citizens have an input. When they came to us on this project, let me tell you what they initially asked for before we had our meetings. And this is for those of you who were not at the meeting, or who did not contact me to voice your concerns. They asked for mixed use. They asked for 16 houses to an acre, because that's what it calls for in our future land use plan. They asked for commercial. They asked for some quadruplexes. I think it was almost 400 houses that was gonna go into this area. And so when we had our meetings, we talked about traffic. We talked about the schools being overcrowded. And so we had the applicant to send an email to the schools to let the schools know how many more students that were gonna be coming to this neighborhood. And when they came back, the schools had a comment, and it wasn't sufficient. So I contacted the schools myself to find out what plans that they have in place for more students coming to the areas. And none of the students, the parents that talked about students or the schools being overcrowded, are here. But some of the things that the school said is that where the board says facilities are inadequate, that's when you get a new school. Combinations of environmental needs cause for new schools. Big growth is a driving force for new schools. You can get new schools for organically created issues, like the community champion for new schools. Overcrowd-ness will get new schools. And if the board sees the need, so all of those things about the school, we need to take to the school board. But the most important thing is that the school board will do a study to see if the growth says that they need a new school. So I want to say that as we grow in Henry County, and we know that there's a need, the schools are gonna be overcrowded, there's a tool for you to go and ask for a study for a new school. Now, just like all of us are landowners, the people that own that land, they want to be on their landowners, too. And what we talked about in District 2 is that we can't stop them, but we can tell them what we want in our communities. And that was no commercial, no quadruplexes, no apartments down on that end. And we said if there's gonna be apartments, it's gonna be at 75. If you're gonna have high density, it's gonna be at 75. And even though the future land use map says that this can be mixed use, we said no. So if anybody else, and the five people that got up here, you weren't in the meetings, or you haven't been coming, you don't know my phone number, you can get it tonight. I will sit with you, I will talk to you, and I will hear my constituents. But we're not gonna be able to shut down growth. When you move into a community and you see 30 acres of green space, know that somebody's gonna buy it one day. Know that somebody's gonna buy it someday. But we have an opportunity to decide what goes there. We have an opportunity to decide what is built in our communities. So there's a lot of conditions. Staff recommended two conditions. I think I got 13. 13, because this is what our citizens said that they did not want and what they could live with. So, you know, I do want to make a recommendation to approve it. First of all, let me make a recommendation to deny what they requested. Let me tell you what we're going to deny. Let's start with that. I just want to make sure that my constituents understand what we've done and what we're not going to allow. So they wanted RS, and we said, okay, so they wanted mixed use, the answer's no. Quadruplexes, the answer was no. 20 multifamily dwellings, the answer was no. Six acres up to 16 acres per acre, six lots to 16 lots per acre, no. They wanted, so what we've done is gonna reduce them by approximately 100 units on that property. Mixed use, age restricted, we said we know that's a gimme just to get smaller lots, no. Commercial and office use, no. They wanted to amend the comprehensive plan, no. And they wanted medium to high density, no. So with all of those no's, if you are willing to listen to the conditions that the constituents that attended the meetings agreed to, I will read them, and if you're in agreement with that, then we will make a recommendation based on the conditions. So first of all, the owner developer should coordinate with GDOT to preserve the right-of-way for the future widening project along Jonesboro Road. So that means that if Jonesboro Road gets widened, and when it gets widened, that you won't build so close, but you will preserve that right-of-way so that we don't have to come back and buy that right-of-way to get Jonesboro Road widened. That the setback shall be based upon the preserved right-of-way. That the owner slash developer, because sometimes in conditions, we'll put the owner, and when, and the owner's not the developer, so that the condition doesn't transfer over. So this says the owner and developer shall provide two gated access points onto Jonesboro Road, so that there's two entrances going out to Jonesboro Road. And it says a gated entry. Now, we know that in Traditions, Crystal Lake Villages, where I used to live, that it was supposed to be gated. It was never gated, and so the county has to incur the cost of maintaining those roads. We're asking that you will gate that community and gate it before CO is given. So that means that it's not on the county to fix those roads, that it will be on the owner and developer. The subject property shall be replanted into one parcel, so that everything, you got two parcels there, that all of these conditions go on everything over there. The project shall be developed as a gated community with private streets. We said that one, so we can take that out, because it's in the one on the gated community. Our homes should have a minimum of two-foot brick or stone water table on all four sides. All four sides. That even though the future land use map says that the medium density can have six lots per acre, we want to limit you to the 2.4 per acre. That the gates shall be installed and operable prior to the issuance of any building permit. That you will have a governing and established HOA. We don't want just a community over there with no guidance, no HOA, nobody to tell them to moor their loans. They can't park on the street. We want all of that in place. In order to provide traffic mitigation, now let me say something about traffic mitigation. You know, it is my, one of my platforms, that I wanted to make sure that we do some traffic calming mitigations and programs in place. So we are looking as a board at arterial routes to reduce the traffic off of those main roads. So whether it's the Western Parallel Connector or the Dutchtown Road, we gotta get people off the main thoroughfares, and we've gotta create some roads that we can control, like slipping, like Dutchtown Road, so that people can go north and south without having to get on 75 or Jonesboro Road. So we're looking into that. We need to look at our road designs, where we got two-lane roads, like two-way roads, that we can put some sidewalks and some walking paths. So as a county, that's our responsibility. We're behind, and we have to do our job. But for you developers, we ask that you do a study to, for DOT to develop a traffic study, and that you would comply with the findings of the traffic study prior to the first CO. And we want some streetlights. On Jonesboro Road. So I know that was a lot. If you need us to type it up, and you come back at another meeting. If you want me to reread it, I can reread. I know it was a lot, but believe me, we had several, we had several meetings. And one thing that I'm trying to work with District 2 on is that we may not be able to stop a developer, but we can talk about what we want. And I agree with the guy that says, "If it's that big of a grocery store, why not say what it is?" And we might not want it. We might not want another Walmart. Everybody's talking about, "Why can't we get this? Why can't we get that?" Because when you got a Walmart every 10, five to 10 miles, Whole Foods don't want to be down here. So we gotta look at that. And so I know this is not my town hall, but I have a lot of District 2 constituents here, and they know this is how we operate. We have a say-so. So we want you to develop, but we want to be a part of how it's developed, and we want to be able to live with what comes. All commercial, all that, you know, high density, we just want to keep that closer to 75.
I wrote down as fast as I could.
Did you have a question about any of those?
I just want to make sure. We're not doing any commercial, no multifamily. We're doing 2.5 dwellings gross per acre.
2.4.
2.4 dwellings gross per acre, and a traffic study. Gated entries, two of them. We gotta leave aside the GDOT right-of-way, to preserve it for the future right-of-way setbacks based off a GDOT right-of-way, governing HOA, streetlights. All homes shall have all sides brick, two-foot water table, and minimum 2,400 square feet. Did I get them all right?
I think you did.
Okay.
Did we miss anything? Oh, we need the streetlights.
The streetlights, yes.
That's because Jonesboro Road is dark. It's very dark. If you missed the last couple of meetings, we did add some lights right at Nash Farms, and we need to continue to add all the way down to the commercial district. So this is one way. Developers come in and develop, add some more lights, so that we can keep the lights going. And the Traditions phase that's coming in, you guys know, I was not in office when that happened. I can't do anything about stuff that happened before. But as long as I'm in office, I will include my constituents. We will have meetings. You gotta come. Don't come up in here telling me about what you need to do, and I've had meetings, and you didn't show up. And if you can't make the meetings, I'm accessible by phone and email.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got the conditions noted, and they will be in the minutes as well for confirmation. So the floor is now open for a motion.
So I would like to say that we will request rezoning to be R3 instead of RS, because R3 is what's in compliance with what Traditions and Crystal Lakes looks like. And that's to maintain the consistencies with the neighboring subdivisions. So the zoning would be R3 and not RS, which would allow for, I think, is 16 units. So RS, conditioning to 2.46 instead of six acres.
So the R3 to match Crystal Lake Villages, I just want to make sure.
Traditions.
Traditions.
I mean, it's R3, so both of them are R3. So it doesn't matter about the name of the subdivision. It's R3.
We're just, the Crystal Lake Villages is, is the size lot we're looking at doing for this development. Traditions is a little bit bigger than the Crystal Lake. But I think, Dante, what?
We're not conditioning you to a subdivision. We're conditioning to R3. So I make a motion that we would deny the request from RA to, I don't know, what were they asking for now?
RS.
Okay. So that we would approve it to RS, but condition it to 2.46 acres per unit with all the other conditions that we've stated.
So let me clarify the motion. Are we saying that the motion is to definitely rezone, but RA to R3 with those conditions that you made?
R3 with the conditions that we-
Okay.
My only concern is the lots. We would like to do the same lot sizes, the Crystal Lake Villages, if you can do that in R3, that would be great. Because Crystal Lake Villages is zoned R3, we would like to do the same lot sizes as the ones that are in Crystal Lake Village, which is the 10,000.
Yes.
Technically, R3 requires an 18,000 square foot lot. Crystal Lake Village was a subdivision that was developed some time ago, pre-recession. Initially, it was for a 55 and older community. And so there were some concessions with respect to the lot size, and there are lot sizes in there that are 10,000 square feet, 10,000, you know, somewhere between 10,000 and 12,000 square feet. But that subdivision is technically zoned R3, as our current codes allow.
We're looking at R3 so that we can maintain the consistency with the neighboring subdivisions. We just want to maintain what we have in that area. We do not want to go lower. We don't want the smaller lots. Two unit, 2.4 units per acre.
Okay.
So if Crystal Lake Villages have four units per acre, you can't have it.
I just want the lot size, so we can give more open space.
That's fine.
That's fine, okay.
Okay, so the motion, again.
Y'all can get a motion. I make a motion that we would approve the applicant's request at approving R3 to maintain the consistency, consistency with the neighboring subdivision with the conditions that have been stated in the minutes already.
Okay, so there is a motion. Is there a second? Have a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. It passes. Okay, well, we're now, item, the public here in RZ 1822, which was the Builders Professional Group requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to R2 sewer for the property located at 728 Elliott Road in District 3 was postponed, as stated earlier. So we're now moving to our finance options and items, and we'll invite Mr. David Smith up to come and speak to the items under the Finance Department, beginning with the resolution to approve a bid award for pest control services for various county departments.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board members, and the Henry County community.
Good evening.
Of this item, various departments require pest control services. We submitted a sealed bid, was conducted and posted on the county's website, enlisted on Team Georgia Marketplace and the ACCG GLGA websites. Seven vendors responded. There were two local vendors. They were not within 5% of the lowest bidder. Point Source, Point Pest Control of Loganville, Georgia, submitted the lowest overall bid. Funding for this commodity is available in the department's budget, and we're recommending awarding the bid to Point Source Pest Control as the overall low bidder.
We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Here are none, seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion? Second. Any further comments or discussions? All in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And our next item is an informational-only item regarding the presentation on financing options for capital projects. Is that still? Okay, yeah. So we have the presenter as Mr. David Smith for that.
Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board, Henry County community, what you all have presented us before was to come up with some- before was to come up with some financing options for our capital improvement plan. And so the, we've worked with Davenport to come up with some financing options for you, and we just wanted to summarize for you what those options were and what we can do. You will recall... Okay. You will recall that we've been trying to add some tools to our toolbox to finance our capital improvement program. Uh, and so this is a chart, a graphical representation of what we can and cannot do in terms, or can and cannot use in terms of the tools that we've added to our toolbox. Uh, that's the SPOS bonds, the general obligation bonds, an installment sale agreement, we created the urban redevelopment agency, and we got approval to expand the, our powers with the governmental services authority. This slide just represents the key characteristics of the types of bonds that are available and what we can do, and the timeframe, uh, to issue them, whether a referendum is required or whether validation is required or not. So in terms of the timeline, uh, if we, we're preparing for our next SPOS, uh, we're determining what those SPOS are later on this evening, you'll hear a presentation regarding the SPOS projects, what is required regarding general obligation bond, urban redevelopment agency and the governmental services authority, what next steps we need to take in order to, and how long it would take to obtain the financing using these at our disposal. What questions do you have?
Okay, what questions, um, does the board have? Okay, ready? Okay. So, um, again, if you can go back to that very first slide, when it spoke about the financing options, I just want you to kind of clarify that schedule again. So if it has a check mark, that means that it would potentially be a good option for the item that's listed, and if you see an X, that means, I mean, can you clarify those checks and Xs?
So the check, the check marks mean that those would be the best options available for those types of projects that are listed down on the left-hand side. Uh, the red Xs means that it's not available to us. Uh, you see some comments that, that talk to, let's say, the courthouse building and technology, an installment sale agreement is due to the size of the financing requirement, uh, that's not available, uh, to us, but certainly, as you look at the governmental services authority, it allows us to do, uh, most of the things that, that we need to get done.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, we thank you for that presentation on the financing options.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, well, now, um, the item, um, that was under, um, the public hearing regarding the proposed plan for the Henry County to enter into its ACCG, a multi-year purchase contract, subject to annual renewal, um, for the, with respect to the Henry County Public Safety Administration Annex, um, has been removed from the agenda. So we're now moving to the, um, next item, which is the proposed FY twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty budget, and this is a public hearing item. And so at this time, we'll, um, recognize Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews and Mr. David Smith for this presentation. Um, as they are coming forward, I would like to make some comments regarding, um, this proposed budget that we're about to hear about. We've already have stated several times this evening that Henry County is, um, the second fastest-growing, um, county in the metro Atlanta area, and actually among the top in the, as a fast-growing county in the nation. And with all of these increases, um, comes with higher demands, um, especially for public safety, for judges, for senior services, new equipment, building permits, uh, actually every department, um, actually sees a higher demand. And this year, the budget team, um, did, um, receive input from each commissioners, they spoke to every department head, and I will tell you, um, as you will probably hear about, is that not everybody got what they wanted, because we, again, needed to balance the budget, um, as projected. So, again, as we realize these increased demands, um, try to leverage technology, and you're gonna hear more about what the budget will hear about, but again, this is a public hearing, um, and it has, this is the first hearing of three that we'll have, and so we now invite, uh, um, the county manager and her finance director to make the presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members, and just one point of clarification, we will have two public hearings for the budget. So we'll have one tonight, and then we'll have our final public hearing and adoption on May seventh, so I did want the public to be aware of that. So thank you, Chair, um, for getting that information out. Um, but Chair Wood is absolutely correct in terms of us as a county growing, and the services that we're providing, um, has to keep up with that growth. And so what we've done this year is we've somewhat done it a little backwards to talk about what we had, what assumptions had to be made in preparation for our budget. Okay, I apologize for that, I'll just do it the old-school way. So some of the, um, assumptions that were made in determining what our budget would look like was first and foremost, we heard loud and clear from the board, um, last year and in previous years, that we don't want to be dependent on our fund balance to balance our budget. And if you all are aware, we have financial advisors, um, and David just recently presented some information from that group regarding our capital, but one of the things that they outlined in a set of policies that they're developing for the county is that we cannot continue to be dependent upon our fund balance. Um, if we continue to use our fund balance to balance our budget, when we get to a point where we have a true emergency, uh, we're gonna have issues and we, we're gonna have to start looking at other options. And so what we wanted to do is make sure that we created and developed a budget that maintained the current level of service that we have, provide the resources that are needed, but also not depend on our fund balance. Um, one of the things that's key in the, um, expenditure assumptions is that all department budgets, um, will be held flat, no prior-year forecast with exceptions for budget priorities. And what that means in layman terms is that we're going to give the departments what they need so that they can provide the services that, that are currently being rendered. Now, what we've done in the past couple of years is we've allocated funding within departments, and we haven't really done true forecasting. We haven't really looked at line items and determined, are those departments truly utilizing the funds that are being allocated? And so, um, David will get into more details in terms of how we came to some of those assumptions, but wanted you all to be aware that this budget does include priorities for the constitutional officers, our public safety, and then other agencies like our libraries and our senior services. One other thing that our expenditure assumptions included was our public safety position vacancies. Um, all of those positions that are currently, um, within our roster have remained in our budget. Um, if it is a non-public safety position, those positions have, um, been taken back and put back into our, um, assumptions that we're making, and so we recognize the importance of making sure that we have the resources available for our public safety team, and then giving them the resources so that they can provide those services. Um, our budget team will continue to work with our departments to analyze all position vacancies and to determine if replacement is necessary. Um, in analyzing our budget, one of the things that we've determined is that over the course of the last two to three years, we've had a number of vacancies that we've just carried and carried and carried. And when you carry those vacancies within your budget, you're also carrying the benefits. And so if you have those funds that are allocated within those departments and you're not using them, then every year you're gonna come back, and it appears that you have this influx of funding. And so one of the good things that David recommended to us is that, hey, we need to really look at truly what we're spending and making sure that we're giving the departments that adequate funding. Um, again, we will continue to work with our staff to achieve savings, um, through reassignments, attrition, and other, other organizational efficiencies. Um, we also have included in our budget new personnel requests. Um, the Sheriff's Department did request two additional school resource officers in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and I will remind the board that that would, will be offset by, um, reimbursements from the Board of Education. And then the budget also includes additional department positions in the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, and I will provide the board with a listing of what those positions are. Again, finally, one of the final assumptions we looked at is new hires are budgeted at the entry level in our effective July one, twenty-nineteen. Um, as you all know, you graciously approved the class and compensation study, which went through and analyzed all of our positions, and we're, we're com- comfortable that we've definitely, um, are competing with the market in terms of some of our positions. Um, is it perfect? Absolutely not. We're still looking at some of those positions, trying to ensure that we not only are getting the best quality, but we're able to compensate those employees for the work that they're doing. And so one of the things that will be included in the budget is if there are vacancies, they will be funded at that entry-level salary. And then I think a big one that I'm sure we'll have some conversation about is that staff is recommending that the county absorb fifty percent of the fourteen percent net increase for our health insurance. Um, during the health insurance presentation last year, one of the things the board, um, said is that we've got to look at how we can reduce our insurance claims. And thankful to the board, we have been very successful in opening our Henry Care's Wellness Center, which opened on last week, and I'm pleased to report to the board that it has been at capacity since its opening. Uh, we have employees that have shown up, and we've had to turn them around because we just don't have the capacity, and so it's definitely already, um, showing and proving to us that it is successful. Um, I will present to the board at a later meeting just some statistics on where we are with that, and then obviously, I think it's important for you all to hear from us regarding our return on that investment. And so, again, we are recommending that the board absorb that fifty percent. Now, we have talked about some incentives for our employees as it pertains to our health insurance, and we will present that to the board as well, but one of the things we wanted to make sure is that we didn't penalize our employees who didn't participate in certain programs. And so one of the things that we've talked about internally as a staff is that if employees participate in biometric screenings, rather than them having to pay fifty percent, they'll only pay twenty-five percent. And so that's just an incentive for the employees who want to participate. We will not penalize those employees who elect not to, which is why we are budgeting at that fifty percent number. The great thing about that is if we have a number of employees that elect to do their biometric screening, who elect to do their health risk assessments, then we'll have some savings there as well. Additional considerations that are included within the budget as well, um, the increase to the Superior Court Judge supplement. I'm not sure if the Superior Court Judges has reached out to all of the commissioners, but they did reach out to the county management team, enter our financial services team, and provided some statistics as they compare to other Superior Court Judges, not only in metro Atlanta, but within the region. And looking at the information that's provided, it does appear that based on our Superior Court Judges workload, the number of cases that they're bringing in, and then comparison to other, um, Superior Court Judges, that they aren't in the higher range, um, in terms of their supplemental pay. Now, this amount, the two-hundred-thousand-dollar allocation that is already included in this recommended budget, also includes, um, supplemental increases for other various, um, individuals within our organization. So as you all are aware, if an increase is given or a supplement is provided to our Superior Court Judges, that also means that our probate court judge, our district attorney, and our solicitor, and a host of other positions also receive a supplement, and so that is included in this budget as well. Additionally, we're also including, um, funding for installing security camera at various county locations. We've had some concerns at some of our facilities, um, most recently at one of our libraries, where there were some concerns, and our public safety team is working with them in terms of making sure that we have some security in place. Um, it's unfortunate that we are living in a world where we have to make sure that we're secure, and we can't have officers banned at every, um, location. And so what we're looking to do is to go ahead and have funding allocated so that we can work with our facility maintenance team and our public safety team to identify those areas in which we have a high volume of traffic and, and if we don't have security cameras, um, in place. This budget also includes a two percent COLA, which is cost of living allowance for, um, all employees, and then the one percent longevity, which was a part of our class and compensation study. If you all will recall, one of the things that the board mentioned is that we had a number of employees that didn't receive anything in the class and compensation study. And so one of the things that we committed to was looking at our budget and determining if we could afford to take it to the next step. And so this budget does include a one percent longevity. Um, if you'll recall, we had the up and over, and it's the same model that we're using based on your pay grade and then your years of service. The budget also includes, um, some part-time aides and marketing managers for the Board of Commissioners. Um, a number of you all, and I won't say a number of you all, but some of the board members did request, um, having some constituent aides in place to assist with some of their day-to-day operations, to assist with marketing some of their events, and so the budget does include that allocation as well. And then other additional considerations are just salary savings for positions that have been vacant for one year or more, and that goes back to my initial conversation, and I talked about, we had a number of positions that's been on the books for three to four years, but this is just one year of vacant positions where they've been unfilled and which we could capture an additional three-hundred thousand dollars. And so that has been put back into our budget. And then finally, no built-in increases for ongoing expenditures. And what that means, Board, is that we are trying to make sure that we're providing the, a level of service that will allow our departments to function and do what they need to do, but we also recognize that mid-year, we're going to have to look at our budget and make sure that if we have departments that are having to expend more than what's been budgeted, then we're able to bring that back, and we've already allocated or accounted for that. So as we develop the budget, one of our charge, charges is to look at what our real and property tax digest is. And as you all know, we have to depend on the information that's provided not only by our Tax Assessor's Office, but by our financial team in terms of making a conservative guess at where we will be with our revenues. Um, based on our last interaction with our chief appraiser, uh, we're still hitting very conservatively, um, we always want to make sure that we provide some cushion in the event that our revenues don't come in as we're projecting. And so based on the information that's been provided by our, um, chief appraiser, and based on the information, um, that David has looked at in terms of forecasting, we are projecting that we're gonna have about a four-point-seven-five, four-point-seven-five percent increase in real and property tax digest. We're also projecting that we're gonna have a two-point-nine percent increase in our lost revenues. So this, at, this evening, Board, we are recommending to you all a budget in the amount of a hundred and sixty-one million dollars. One of the things I want to reiterate is that this budget does not incre- does not increase, there is no increase to our millage rate, um, and it does not reduce any of our current services. And what that means is that we're able to operate under the budget based on that current twelve-point-seven-three-three millage rate that's set. Now, one of the things that we, we definitely want to talk about is that if we start changing or looking at amending that number, we've got to be very cognizant of that millage, because what we want to make sure is that we have no impact or have to use our fund balance now, and that we don't have to present to the board and come back when we're talking about the millage rate, and, and presenting to you all saying, hey, we adopted a budget, but we knew we couldn't afford that budget. And so one of the things we wanted to make sure is that the board understood, we're not wanting to tie your hands to a number to force you to increase the millage rate, unless we have some priority needs in the future that we're gonna need to look at. I think it's also important for the board to understand that we're gonna maintain our commitment to balance our current year revenues with our current year expenses. If we have them, if we're collecting those revenues, we want to make sure that we're spending at that amount. And then most importantly, the recruitment and retention of our employees. It's very important to make sure that we do have good quality employees that are working here in the county and that we're retaining those employees, but also as citizens, you all have a fiduciary duty to make sure that we're setting a budget that will allow us to provide the services to our residents. And so we want to make sure that we continue with Phase Two of our class and compensation study, which I've talked about, the one percent longevity. Again, this budget does incorporate our defined benefits plan. One of the things that we've talked about in the last two years is making sure that we are funding our defined benefits plan at the level that it needs to be funded. And then finally, maintaining employee benefits at an affordable rate for our employees. Again, the recommendation from staff is that the board take on a fifty percent of that increase. Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to David to take us through some budget summaries, and then I'll be available for any questions that you all may have. Yes, ma'am.
On that one sixty-one, we have an additional summary with the judges and all of that, is that in the one sixty-one?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, thank you.
So let's do the numbers. We adopted a budget in fiscal year nineteen of one sixty-one point five million dollars. We've amended that budget several times, where we're now at one hundred and sixty-three point nine million dollars. It continues to increase, but it's primarily because of we have a lot of vacancies right now that we're carrying in that budget. So proposing a budget for fiscal year twenty, I wanted to make certain that we used actual expenditures and actual and projected revenues. And so I'm forecasting our actual expenditures to come in at around one hundred and forty-nine to one hundred and fifty million dollars. That allows me the opportunity to make additions to personnel, to make additions to operations and maintenance, some required, as well as helping me to balance it. as well as helping me to balance it, deleting some of those vacant positions that have been vacant for a long, long time. This is how I arrived at the proposed budget of 161, which basically is a decrease from our adopted budget of 161.5, of about a negative 3.33%. So, the items that are coming up now are some things that we have little control over, but in recommending that we do for this year's budget, fiscal year 20. We had a 14% insurance increase. We're recommending that the county pay 50% of that amount, so that's 50% of what that insurance increase was. We want to continue to fund our annual contribution to the pension. And we want, we had an increase from ACCG from 13.1% to 13.9% of the amount that they wanted us to contribute at. I've also added the Wellness Center, which wasn't budgeted before, and we're adding that amount to our budget this year in fiscal year 20. Going forward, that amount is going to increase about 4% each year. The security cameras we mentioned before, and we're also purchasing for the tax assessor, I think it's a software product called Pictometry, that allows them to better assess the properties that we are taxing. So, the additions total 4.1 million. Let's take a look at a trend. We've been budgeting at that 163, 162 million dollar number. If you look at our total expenditures just over the past two years and our forecasted amount for fiscal year 19, you'll see we're actually trending a lot less than that 163 number. Property taxes continue to make up the majority of our budget at 56.6%. With sales tax at the next, at 18.5, I think that's what it was, at 18.5%. So, the majority of our revenue is coming from our property and sales tax and any other taxes that we levy, including the charges for services. On the expenditure side, public safety is the lion's share of our budget. And so, we wanted to maintain that public safety as the lion's share of our budget. General government being at 13.2%, but we've increased some budget areas for culture and recreation and in housing and development versus the prior year. So, let's take a look at our fund balance. We're forecasting to end this fiscal year 19 at $76.9 million in fund balance. I'm proposing, and the budget team is proposing, that we balance revenues to expenditures where we maintain the same level of fund balance. Our current assigned fund balance is $34.1 million. We have a 25% budget restriction of $40.2 million. And so, the estimated fund balance before that restriction is 42. But that leaves us, after the restriction and the assigned fund balance amount, of about some flexibility of $2.6 million. So, this slide presents the total budget. So, we presented, we present just the general fund budget here, but in total, which includes the special revenue funds, our enterprise funds, our debt service funds, that annual budget for all those funds is 181 million, 181.4 million dollars. That's a decrease of $6 million from the prior fiscal year, adopted budget of 187. And it's primarily due to trying to make certain we balance revenues to expenditures. We're not using fund balance for any increases. The use of property tax and sales tax, that increased percentage you saw on a prior slide is what's driving the increase, and that's primarily in the tax digest numbers, not utilizing the millage rate. And it's offset by an increase in the personnel costs, reclassifications, benefit changes, and the defined benefit contribution increases. So, overall, our general fund budget decreased $535,000 from the fiscal year 2019 adopted budget. So, I want to talk about opportunities that we still have to consider. I talked earlier about, we have to have a funding mechanism for our capital improvement plan. We have a lot of deferred maintenance in the county, and we have a lot of major capital projects that remain in play. We've developed, as recommended, a five-year capital improvement project list and presented it to the board and the related debt service that goes along with that. We will have to address that. Recruitment and retention, we're going to continue to see increases in insurance costs. We're hoping that that begins to go down with the Wellness Center that we implemented and with a healthier workforce. But that's a major opportunity that we still have to consider, as well as whether we're going to pass on more costs to the employee. So, tonight is our first public hearing, and this is representation of the budget. I provided for the public's view a summarization of the budget, not a detailed by department budget. That's been on display, not only on our website, but they could have picked it up at our reception area in Human Resources. Our second public hearing and budget adoption is supposed to be on Tuesday, May the 7th, where we'll have the hearing, and then after the hearing, hopefully, adopt the budget.
Well, we've heard the presentation or public hearing of the budget. Are there any questions or comments from the board before we begin a public hearing? Commissioner Wilson?
Sure, can you, let's go back to the class of comp. Last year, we capped out, you capped out employees at 5,000, correct?
That is correct.
So, was we going to look at that this year as well to see if they go beyond that cap?
Yes, sir, and so, the budget does include any employee that was capped out at that 5,000. Phase Two of the class and comp is included in the budget. And so, that was about an additional $1.5 million for those and for any certifications that are received throughout our public safety team based on the public safety reset that was approved by the board as well. That is included in this 161 number.
And also, we were looking at the evaluations to have some part to do with the employee evaluations, have something to do with the raises. Is that part of this?
No, sir, that is not included. So, what we've talked about is having performance evaluations tied to increases, and we have not developed that as of yet. This is just Phase Two. One of the other things that the board did ask staff to look at is not only the evaluations, but certain certifications and credentials that those employees that have that type of certification should be compensated for. And so, that is Phase Three of this class and compensation study.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
I would like to see each, and I mentioned this to you, but I just want to make sure that I mention it openly, that I would like to see each department head, and more specifically, I didn't have an opportunity like some of the commissioners may have and heard from departments and their requests. Those that talked to me, you know, and said they wanted to talk about it, I did, but there were quite a few that I didn't hear from, like fire or police. And I know that we are taking on 50% insurance and increases for employees, and I commend you on always looking out for the employees. But if that money is taken away from our firefighters having the proper gear or our police officers having the proper gear, then I have a concern for that, because although we help the employees, we don't make sure that our citizens and that our public safety has everything that they need. So, I would really like to hear from our chief of police and our fire chief and our sheriff to make sure that everything that they need is in this budget.
Yes, ma'am, and one thing I do want to reiterate is that all of the constitutional officers, including the sheriff, whatever they ask for in their budget, those requests were automatically granted, because we realize that. And what I'll do is make sure that I provide a copy of those detailed budgets, and then if you'd like to schedule some time with the fire chief and police chief, most certainly can do that.
They're not constitutional officers, so I know that by mandate, we have the other ones, but those are the ones that I'm really concerned about that, you know, although we're taking care of the employees, that we're also making sure. I mean, with everything that we've had going on, I don't want to have to come back in the middle of next year and our chiefs are standing up here in front of us saying, we need to write a grant because we need this, or the guys don't have this, or they're shooting guns that are, you know, 100 years old, whatever. But I just want to make sure that everything that they're asking for, to make sure that they have what they need, is granted.
And so, any of the resources that were asked for within those respective units, those requests were granted. But I'll make sure that we schedule some time so that you can hear from them specifically, and any other board member that wants to hear from them specifically on that. And you mentioned it, over the last couple of weeks, we've had some tragedy to hit Henry County. And I've heard from a number of commissioners, I think I heard from you, Commissioner Clemmons, at 10 o'clock at night saying, we need to make sure that we have the resources for our public safety team. It's great to have partners in our adjoining counties, but it's also great to have our own things available to us so that when we need to utilize them, we can utilize them. One of the things that I-
Let me be specific. I had an issue when I looked on the news and our chief or whoever had to call Clayton County SWAT truck. Why we don't have our own SWAT truck? I have an issue when they got a call, a robot from, and I don't know who robot it was, from another county. He need, he need two robots. So, I just want to make sure that everything, anything that we, that's my conversation with the chief. What did you call and borrow?
So, everything that the chief called and borrowed or entered into some type of collaboration is in that capital project list. And it's been in the capital project list for a number of years, the Bearcat, the robot, the SWAT vehicle.
Was it ours or somebody else's?
No, 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 I'm saying the items that we had to utilize from other jurisdictions, we know that there is a need, and that's why we, it is so important for us to try to get this capital project list approved, because if we don't, we've got to go back to that slide that David talked about. That's that fund balance, and that's where we're going to have to pull it from. We don't want to have to do that, because we want to use our emergency funds for emergencies. And I'm not saying that that was an emergency, but we need to plan accordingly. And you're the exact, you feel the same way that we feel. To get the phone call to say, hey, we don't have the equipment that we need, but we're working together to make it happen, was refreshing. But it's always great to have our own equipment so that we can utilize it. So, thank you, and we'll definitely make sure that we get those meetings scheduled.
Commissioner Clemmons, I'm glad to hear you say that, talk about the Bearcat, because that's the main thing I know I've heard when we were up in Pittsburgh, Maryland and so forth, but that was one I knew, which is that SWAT vehicle that you're talking about. But you're right, whatever it is that we need, we just need to continue to make sure we have our own. Even though I would like to say that I did thank the chair of Clayton County and their team for bringing the assistance, but you're right, we need our own.
And a negotiator. I know that like next week after that, there was the same similar type of thing. We're talking about more employees and making sure that we have what we need in this county. I think there was another county that said they sent in a negotiator. Do we have it in our budget? I'm going to ask the chief, can you just call up somebody and do you have a negotiator on standby? We need, I know that our guys have what they need, but every day that we watch the news, things getting more and more serious. Our firefighters first on the scene, and I've talked to the staff about this already, but a little small county, their firefighters got riot gear. Our guys don't have riot gear. They need, they went to a house that looked like it was a fort on a fire call for somebody having a heart attack. And a few, and they left, and then a few hours later, there was a dead body there. So, what do they have? Are they equipped? And so, those conversations, we're the board that has the budget for that. So, I don't want this budget to go by without making sure that whatever, and I don't want to see, I don't want to see 30 police cars. I want to see equipment to send them guys and those women home to their families.
So, and what I'm going to do is ask our deputy county manager who oversees our public safety team to come up, because everybody's watching this, and I want the residents to know that you are protected, and we have the equipment, and we have the resources and agreements in place to reach out to those jurisdictions. So, I'll let him kind of answer some of those questions, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sherri. Commissioner Clemmons, and I will, I do want to applaud all our team members from last two weeks ago. We do have a negotiation team, they're great, they do a great job. We have a SWAT team, they're amazing. We have been working with all the public safety departments over the last week and a half and doing a gap analysis. We do know we need armored vehicle that's in a capital improvement plan that's in there. I don't think it can wait. I have two folders here from all our public safety. We've done our gap analysis on this one call like we do on every big call we have. Since we couldn't move forward tonight, I will be back as a director from the county manager for next meeting with a proposal to fill these gaps that we've identified already. We've got a couple more little get-togethers in the next, this week and first next to validate everything. But I do want to make sure there's no mistake about it. We did have to borrow an armored car, but our team is great. Our team is amazing, they're trained, second to none. Our negotiating team did well, I was there watching them for hours, they did amazing. We did have outside comments, something that big, everybody came, even the ones not called, came to the scene. But we, but make no mistakes also, we do have gaps that we need to fill, and we're here to present that. I would tell you, the first thing that was related to me by the manager is, we're going to fix this. We don't have it, fix it. And that's what we've been working on is our public safety team to bring it to you guys. And I expect on May 7th to have some more recommendations for you guys.
But Brad, I want to be clear that I wasn't saying they weren't-
Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Yeah, just make sure.
Yeah, 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 but all the people that came, everybody was not called, a lot of people were self-dispatched.
But the other thing is that you said something really key. You said that it's in the capital improvement plan.
That's right.
That's an issue.
Yes, we need to get them-
That's an issue, let me tell you why, because I had a playground in the capital improvement plan that still ain't got built yet, because we haven't voted on any money for the capital improvement plan.
That's right.
I'm saying, put it in the budget, we can control that. That money we got now, I'm saying those emergency things that's in capital improvement, we may need to move it to the budget. Even if we have to tell our citizens, we had to move this up one mill-
Okay.
-to fund public safety. I don't think, I have a constituent that will say, well, commissioners, I'd rather not have this for our police officers in our fire department than to pay additional $30 a year. So, I just, I mean, I know we got made, but I don't want to rush approving the budget without making sure that everything, anything that's in capital improvement plan, they may not get it if this board doesn't agree to do everything on the capital improvement plan. We can't play games with that.
Yes, ma'am, and we look forward to talking to you.
And I know you guys know, I know I'm really passionate about that, and so, I don't want it to come off wrong, I'm working on that, but-
Sure.
Yeah, capital improvement is not good enough.
Sure, and we got that, and like I said, we have some suggestions. We look forward before the next meeting to do some one-on-one with you and let you, let you guys see for yourself. They're pretty amazing, amazing team.
They are.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, are you done, Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
My question would be, are you going to have a work session for us so we can go through the details of this budget and not have to do what she's doing now, trying to pick all these little pieces that we need to have in place? We need to have a work session, and that work session needs to be very detailed, not in a summary, so we can see how this money is being allocated, department by department, need by need if necessary. But that needs to happen, so we can make sure when we pass this budget, it's the right budget for Henry County.
Absolutely, Commissioner Thomas, and I know that we do have a workshop scheduled for May 14th to cover our SLOPS project. So, if it's the will of the board, we can certainly-
Is budget on May 7th?
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, that was a trick. So, yes, we will have to schedule some time, and certainly, we'll get with the chair in seeing if we can call a meeting of the board so that we can go through this, because I've heard from a couple of commissioners earlier today that they do want to see details of the specific departments.
Absolutely.
One of the things that I said to the board, and we had a very enlightening conversation about the budget, is I want you all to trust the management team and our financial team, because we want to make sure that we're not creating a budget that we can't afford, and we're not creating a budget that when we start talking about millage, that we're going to have to increase it. I love the idea of if we're not going to make a decision or get to approving that capital, we can include it in this budget. But I want to be able to tell you all, this is what it's going to cost, and this is the impact that it's going to have when we start talking about our millage. What, I'm sorry?
Just when do you finish?
One of the things that we've talked about internally for the last year and a half is how do we develop our budget and set our millage rate simultaneously? And we haven't been successful in trying to do that, because really, you should be setting that millage rate, which then tells you how much money you have to spend. And so, we do it somewhat backwards, because this is just the way that it's been done, where we have our budget first, and then we have our millage. And we can't operate based on- first and then we have our millage. And we can't operate based on what we've done in the past. It would make our job so much easier if we knew going into this budget, this is a millage rate, this is the amount of money that we have, and this is how we're gonna develop that budget. With the understanding that we may have needs that exceed what that millage rate is. And then that's when you start looking at developing that capital project list. But to answer your question, yes, we will schedule, um, some meetings between now and May 7th, um, with the entire board to go over, um, the budget, line item by line item, and the individual departments. If you all don't mind, what I will do is ask, um, department heads to attend that meeting as well because I know it can be overwhelming if we're trying to schedule individual department head meetings. Now, if there's something you all want to do individually with a department head, that's certainly something that we can discuss. But I think it would be best if all of the information is presented to the entire board at the same time.
I really would like to have the work session for the Commissioners because we don't want to have department heads appearing to be competing for dollars or appear to be, uh, competing for attention. We want to look at the budget for Henry County. And we need to determine what's the return on investment for funding different departments. Is it worth time? Uh, uh, energy? What alternatives are you giving us, even be it from, uh, insurance to any other department? I like the fact that you are taking, taking out the employees that are, the vacancies that we're carrying to reduce the budget amount. That was a lot. That was a good alternative. We need to see what alternatives you looked at to help us with this budget.
So, no, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments from the board? Okay, um, we got our notes duly noted. Um, one, we'll need to schedule a workshop, um, and, um, definitely, um, to invite in the department heads as well.
I have a question, Chief.
Yes, sure.
Is May 7th the date that we have to adopt it? Do we have more time? Because we're gonna need more time then. That's two weeks. That's like two weeks.
So, we-
It has to be adopted by the end of May. And there was problems in prior years. We didn't get it adopted by the time this was set.
So, what we, we've done is we've said it earlier, we have to have it adopted by May 31st. And so, if the board doesn't act on anything on May 7th, we will have met our requirements for the public hearings. And if we want to continue it to the final meeting in May or have a call meeting prior to May 31st. I think in years past, we've had some issues trying to get the budget approved or maybe the millage rate approved. And so, we just wanted to put some cushion in there. But we want to make sure that you all have ample time to make sure that you have a good document and that you're comfortable with what we're recommending to you all. And if there's any recommendations you all want to make back to us. I would ask that if there's anything additionally that you'd like to see in this presentation, if you'd just let myself and/or Brad know so that we can make sure that we incorporate that information, um, into this presentation as well. And then Sherwood, I just want to remind you that it is a public hearing and so, please make sure that we do open it up for public comments.
Okay, thank you. And, um, we'll, I've got some comments I'll make after the public hearing. So, um, again, are there any questions or comments from the board at this time?
I, I just want you to reconsider the May 7th date. I know you have it up here. Maybe that can be another presentation, but it doesn't have to be budget adoption. Uh, I would like to, uh, you know, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, well, well, I'll, I'll make a, make a, a motion that, um, it, um, that this becomes another budget hearing and that on May 14th or so, um, we, which is already a call meeting, that we have the workshop session because that's already scheduled. And then staff can actually adopt or send us to some recommendations on when we are to return to adopt the budget. So, um, and, and I do know, one other thing I'd like to hear more about in the next hearing is, you know, how can we bring that millage conversation closer together as well? So, I know we've done it that way, but there may be some other legalities. But that's just a question to respond to later. But let's hear, um, any other comments from the board?
I, I did want to, um, comment to Commissioner Clemens's concern regarding May 7th. So, we can still have the public, the second public hearing on May 7th and then the board can consider it on May 14th. Uh, we've already advertised both as public hearings and so, there is nothing wrong with us tabling it or, um, continuing it to a later date.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if you heard that we were suggesting on May 14th because it's already a call meeting to make it more of a workshop session as well because that was the thing, you know, that we've heard.
That is, and, and I think it, that is perfect because if the board does not adopt it on the 7th, then that would give us the 14th to have some conversation.
Well, what I'm hearing from the board is that May 7th, we all have a public hearing. May 14th, we want a workshop and then, uh, we'll have to decide when we adopt the budget.
Duly noted. So, we'll be prepared to present the SPOS discussion and the budget discussion on May 14th.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing unless there are some other comments from the board. And so, at this time, um, we will allow, um, public comments to be made, um, from our citizens. And we ask that as you do approach to, um, please state your name and address just for this. This is not one you sign up in advance for, um, before making comments about the FYF-1920 budget. So, again, each person that comes for it will have five minutes to speak. So, at this time, uh, we'll invite, um, individuals up, um, to speak, um, on the budget. Again, we'll invite any individual up to speak on the budget at this time. Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Um, we will, um, again, conclude this public hearing on the first presentation of the budget.
Thank you.
Okay. So, are, are there any other comments from the board before we move to the next item? Okay. Well, we're now gonna move into the informational only, um, discussion about the SPOS five project recommendations. And we'll invite Mr. Rocky Womirup and, um, Sheri Hofson Matthews. And we do recognize that there are some of our SPOS committee members in the audience and we thank you for your service. All right?
Um, good evening again, Chair and Board Members. We are going to do a modified presentation, um, this evening. We're gonna present all of the projects, but Rocky has 79 slides and it's 9:00 PM. And so, unless you all want to sit through 79 slides, um, then what I'm gonna have Rocky do is rather than show you all the areas of every project, he will go through the Commissioners' project lists, um, the capital project lists, and then we can have some discussion. So, if there is no objection of the board, we will proceed. Um, so again, this evening, we are presenting to the board the SPOS five committee recommended projects. Um, as you all know, um, each of you all had appointees to our SPOS five committee. And I do want to take this time to not only thank those committee members, but recognize the ones that are present here tonight. Um, I do believe we have, um, Mr. Clayton Cartt, who is the Chair's appointee and who is also the committee chair. We have Ms. Carlotta Harrell, who served as our District Five appointee and the committee's vice chair. And I don't think anyone else is here. That's it. And we don't have any other board members present, but again, we had Tom Israel for District One, Arnold Cole for District Two, Mike Elrod for District Three, Harold Jenkins, District Four, and then Claude Spink served at the, served as the County Manager's appointee. Um, over the last, um, year, about a year and maybe not a half, but year, or since July of last year, there has been 17 meetings that have been held by the entire SPOS committee. And they have used and utilized a lot of their time and efforts to go all around the county to hear not only from your constituents, but to develop what they believe to be a good project list for this board to consider. Um, as you all know, the SPOS committee is a recommending body to the board of Commissioners. And so, these are recommendations that staff is presenting on behalf of the committee for your consideration. One of the things that we focus on is what will our financial distributions look like. Um, I believe we've discussed this, but just for the public and for the board's reminder, um, we are projecting that our SPOS five collections will be, uh, $245 million. And of that $245 million, 75% of it is allocated to the county. That totals the 183,750. And then for the cities, they have a 25% allocation, which is split amongst the four cities, totaling $61,250. What the committee has recommended is that countywide projects consist of $51,446, district projects at 132,304, and then the funds per district at $26,468. At this time, I will pause and allow Rocky to go through the countywide projects and then he'll briefly go through the district projects. I will remind the board that we do have a workshop meeting scheduled to go into more detail. Um, if you have specific questions, we'd certainly be glad to answer them tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. Uh, we'll try to be quick, I hope. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, the first list is the countywide projects. And, uh, as Sheri mentioned, it's gonna be around $51,446,000. On the countywide, we have the jail pod addition, fleet replacement program, probate court parking, uh, total of 28,000, 28 million and roughly 28 million. Uh, public safety, uh, we are looking at a new fire station and also, uh, a new prison in the Ola, uh, area. Uh, then in, uh, Fairview area, we have a rebuild for Fire Station 16, I mean, Fire Station Six. So, we already have that first station there. So, the employees will be just showing up to a different new station. As well as a, a police station, prison. There's a police prison in that area currently right now. So, we're just gonna be building, uh, a new, uh, prison for them. Then District Two will have a new, uh, rebuild for Stations Five, as well as we're proposing a new, uh, District Two police station. And then, uh, equipment for the new Fire Station Seventeen for the Ola area. And then, uh, program management. Real quick, under District One. Uh, we're looking at 26 million. Uh, major projects, uh, 81 widening. Of course, we're on, currently under design on that project. So, that would be the matching. Uh, as you can see, it's also shared with District Three. Actually, I'll just go towards the, that's probably better. Uh, that kind of gives an idea of, of the area we're talking about. Uh, close to, between Postmaster and, and Bethany Road. And that's a shared project with District Three. We're also looking at, uh, the design, just to continue, of 81, Phase Two. Uh, and that will be also shared with District, uh, Three. McDonough Parkway Extension is under construction. That would be additional funds to complete the, the pavement and also the north section. Once G-Dot does the widening of Sterile Twenty, we do have some additional widening north of that intersection. Uh, this is the South Ola Extension. I think this was mentioned earlier this, this, this afternoon or this evening. Uh, we're requesting funding for this project as well. Intersection improvements in District One. Uh, we're looking at Lester Mill at Bill Garner Parkway. Pixfield at Legwin Mill. Pixfield at Old Jackson Road. Race Track Road at Iris Lake. This is, uh, was shared with District Three. And also, uh, we're gonna be talking to the city of McDonough for, for the share since it's, uh, half of that road is actually in the, in the city. So, those numbers will, most likely will change hopefully. And then we have McDonough Parkway at Henry Parkway. Derrods, uh, there's still quite a few derrods in District One. We're looking at Pixfield Road, construction. We're currently completed, working on finalizing the design on that one. And then we got, uh, design for Cardell Drive. Berg Road, we have, uh, we're requesting funding for, for the construction, design and construction. Ellis, Ellis Town Road, design. Sandy Reach Road, design. District Two. And we'll, we'll provide this on the, it'll be on the internet. So, people will, will see, I know I'm going fast, but they can see it at, at the, on time, leisure. Uh, District Two, uh, we have capital improvement projects and also transportation projects. Uh, let me go back real quick. On the capital projects, we have Nash Farm and also a, a rec center for District Two. Major transportations, we have the Flipping Road Extension. Uh, flipping kind of, dense sand, we'll like to take it all the way south and kind of given, what they were talking earlier today, that north-south connectivity that is missing in the county. Uh, we will tie into North, North Mount Carmel. Intersection improvements, uh, Mount Carmel, South Mount Carmel Road. Greenwood Industrial Parkway. Metro Road at Jonesboro Road. Derrods, there's also a lot of derrods in District Two. Uh, this one was mentioned, I think, earlier today. Dutch Town Road, that's another good project to give you that north-south connectivity. North Teal Drive. We have bridge improvements. Hampton Locust Grove Road at Towahlagga River. District Three.
And I'm gonna interrupt Rocky so I can get us moving a little bit quicker so we can get through the projects and then ask some questions of the board. So, I'm gonna kind of go through the list and have Rocky kind of flip through for us. Yes.
Just flip, okay. That worked, that worked.
So, for District Three, we have our capital projects, North Ola Park, future improvements, and then the Heritage Park Senior Center. That's an additional building for exercise equipment. And then we have our major transportation projects. State Route 81 widening, that's gonna be a shared project with District One. Um, there's two phases to that project. Again, that's gonna be shared with District One. The second phase is design only. We then have the East Lake Road improvements. That's gonna be a shared project with District Four. We have McDonough Parkway, construction. We have the Airline Road Extension, design only. And then we have the Snapping Shoals Road, design only project. So, that's our major transportation. Then we have our intersection and signalization projects. East Lake Road at Elliott Road. Um, again, that is a shared project with District Four. We have East Lake Road at Airline Road, shared with District Four. East Lake Road at Rowan Drive, shared with District Four, design only. Then we have Race Track Road at Iris Lake Road, shared with District One. We have Bridges Road at Willow Lane, State Route 20 at Turner Church Road, North Ola Road at Snapping Shoals Road, design only. Up Church Road at State Route 81, design only. And then Airline Road at McGarrettie Road, design only. We have no dirt road projects listed. And then we have funding for sidewalks in the amount of $280,000. We do have some funding also for resurfacing, surface treatment, widening, striping, and raised pavement markers. Any questions on that one? We'll move on to District Four. We have Bud Kelly Park improvements under the capital projects, Mickey D Cochrane Park improvements under the capital projects, and then the Mosley Park improvements under the capital projects. For major transportation, we have the Rock Quarry Road widening and the East Lake Road widening design. And that's gonna be a shared project as well. And then for intersection and signalization, we have East Lake Road at Elliott Road, shared with District Three, East Lake at Airline, and East Lake at Rowan, which was previously shown on the District Three list. And then we have the Crumly Road at 155. Currently, we don't have any dirt road projects or bridge improvements. And then we have funding for resurfacing, surface treatment, widening, striping, and raised pavement markers. And then finally, for District Five, we have capital projects, which include Hen Valley Park upgrades, Cochrane Park upgrades, and then Village Park, um, park upgrades. For major transportation projects, we have the widening of Fairview Road. And we have West Village Parkway construction and Clark Drive. Um, we also have funding allocated or recommended for path improvements, um, which is the Fairview Path to Panola Mountain Trail. We have funding in the amount of $500,000 for sidewalks. And then we have funding, um, allocated for resurfacing, surface treatment, widening, striping, and raised pavement markers.
So, what's next? Uh, our next, as mentioned before, uh, May 14th, we'll have a call meeting, uh, workshop for SPOS Five. June 4th, uh, BOC to approve the SPOS Five project list. Prior to August 1st, uh, BOC and CEDIS to approve an intergovernmental agreement for the SPOS Five ballot. And then August 1st, all information has to be submitted to the elections office, uh, for the ballot preparation. Of, then November 5th, that'll be election day. That'll be the SPOS Five ballot vote. And then April 1st of 2020, then that's the day that SPOS Five collections will begin if, if the referendum passes. We will take any questions.
Okay. Are, are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question on, on the District Two. I know that the Flipping Road extension was supposed to have sidewalks coming from Hudson Bridge all the way through up to, um, Jonesboro Road to Mount Carmel. And then, um, it was supposed to have sidewalks coming around towards Dutch Town, but I don't see any funding for sidewalks. So, is, I don't know what this resurfacing, surface treatment. When we have other fee, we have impact fees or something else. Uh, we have other money, LMIC money for that. So, I think that was moved because we don't have anything by sidewalks for District Two. And I know that that was one of the things that they talked about in meetings, that District Two was supposed to have a sidewalk plan. And I don't see any money for the sidewalk plan. So.
Right. At the, at the time, the committee didn't recommend any sidewalks, but you know, at the workshop, we can make those, those adjustments.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board? Okay, um, hearing none. Uh, that concludes our discussion on the SPOS. And I just want to- And I just wanna make a note that on May fourteenth, we have from nine a.m. to eleven reserved. So y'all need to make sure we've got enough time, since we're gonna now talk and SPLUS at the same time, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, so now, um, we'll move into our public comment section, which is where, um, we've welcomed our citizens to come and voice their county-related, um, concerns. Um, they were requested to sign up prior to the meeting, and each person will be granted five minutes. So, um, we'll look at our county clerk to identify how many do we have.
We have four speakers tonight. Rusty Perkins, David O'Keefe, Jake Smith, and Wayne Swanson.
Okay. You will please come state your name, please.
Rusty Perkins, seventy-five Wallace Road, Villarica, Georgia. Um, I come tonight one to, uh, thank the county for accepting the money of the Thirtieth Georgia to allow us to do our reenactment that, uh, that the board had agreed that reenactments would be able to be allowed to do out at Nash Farm. But yet, three weeks prior to the event taking place, the board in its infinite wisdom decided to go against its own bylaws and deny the right of the reenactment, which muskets and cannons are used in. So I wanna, I wanna thank y'all for that. But us reenactors, we're a totally different breed. We're a history-loving breed. We're not the racist boogeymen that several individuals like to put out there. Nobody denies that this country was wrong with the slavery. But you know what? I don't hear nobody complaining about the Jews that were enslaved in Egypt. You complain about something that happened well over a hundred-and-fifty years ago. And you're constantly at every turn trying to downgrade us and make us out to be a bunch of racist boogeymen, so people can't come out and hear the history. With that being said, I wanna pre- uh, I wanna say thank you for the infinite wisdom of waiting until just a few days before the event and coming out and tearing down the sign. Major construction. Don't worry about the roads. And all honesty, don't worry about the public safety. Keep drawing the thugs out of DeKalb and Clayton. You know, this is Atlanta South, correct? That's what you need down here, is a bunch of thugs, and that's exactly what you're drawing. And then you turn around and you congest the roads at every turn by putting in more housing developments. And you don't do nothing about the roads. Excellent job. Excellent job. I appreciate the thick grass that was almost up to my knees that I had to walk around out there this weekend. But you know what? The two black vendors that come out there this weekend, they loved it. They enjoyed it. You know why? Because they actually come and they talk to us one-on-one, and they found out we're not the boogeymen that y'all tried to play it off to be. You know, it's, it's hideous, the way that y'all treated the Thirtieth, trying to bring revenue into this county. Well, you know what? They've been approached by Spalding County. One of their commissioners down there, "If you don't want, if you don't want the money that we put for the permit, the four thousand dollars that we put out there, that's fine. We can take it elsewhere. It's not a problem." And that's exactly what you're wanting anyway. Why you can't fess up on that is beyond belief. You sit and you, you say it's okay to have reenactments, and then you turn right around and you thumb the people that are trying to bring people down here. You lost revenue from Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. We didn't. We were told to keep the vendor fee. But they weren't making the trip down here. And they were very displeased with the way that the board handled Nash Farm. Then on top of that, you turn around, "We've never had an issue out there before where we had to have law enforcement." Well, guess what? Three days before the event, nine hundred dollars a day, we had to have two officers out there. It's a crying shame. Every time we turned around, we had to have the rug pulled out from unders. It's amazing. But yet you still, after two years, refused to sit down one-on-one and actually talk to the reenactors to see what we're truly about. We're just people that love history. History of all kinds. We are not hanging effigy out there and burning it, like the people of New York did.
Thank you. Your time is ended. Okay. The next person?
David O'Keefe of Hampton, Georgia. Good evening. I'm here to express my concerns for the fate of Nash Farm Battlefield. I was here two years ago addressing the same subject. I thought progress was being made until the Democratic Party members of this board made a politically motivated decision concerning a battle reenactment taking place at Nash Farm Battlefield this past weekend. Political bias and opinion should not get in the way of telling history. The activity of a battle reenactment is important for the youth to see and learn what played out on this battlefield. I remember well my father taking me to battle reenactments, witnessing history portrayed live on several battlefields. I will never forget them. Therefore, battle reenactments are very important. They leave an impression so that we will never forget the sacrifices ba- made by Americans on both sides of that bloody war. Some members of the board deny a battle ever took place at Nash Farm Battlefield. Well, there is no denying, denying it with all the evidence presented to, presented to you repeatedly over the years. You know that this battlefield was home to Georgia's largest Union Cavalry charge, with sabers drawn by Kilpatrick's men as they broke through the Texas regiment lines and on Nash Farm Battlefield. Of these Texas men defending Lovejoy Station surrounding area was a famous African-American sharpshooter and cavalryman, Holt Collier. Collier is best known for capturing a live bear for President Teddy Roosevelt that the president refused to shoot because it was tied to a tree in nineteen oh-two. This event gave birth to the world's most beloved toy, the teddy bear. And this is a history that Henry County should be very proud of. An in-depth video about Holt Collier's history and other historical information can be found at makedixiegreatagain.com. This is history Henry County should be proud of, and I'll repeat that. So please stop denying that Nash Farm is a battlefield and keep the name Nash Farm Battlefield. And that sign at McDonough Road should read Nash Farm Battlefield. And, you know, speaking freely, I'm just very disappointed that the board has let Henry County down. And I'm hoping, just hoping, things will get better. And thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you.
Next is Jake Smith.
Jake Smith. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Ms. Wood, good evening. My name is Jake Smith. I'm a Marine Corps veteran and a Georgian who is in love with our state and one of the reenactors who attended the event at Nash Farm this past weekend. On behalf of all the reenactors, I would like to personally thank the Henry County Police Officers who worked hard to keep us safe that weekend. Although the weather did not permit, permit us to stay through Sunday, the Thirtieth Georgia hosted a stellar living history program nonetheless. I speak for myself and many others when I say it was a wonderful event, which I look forward to attending for many years to come. Recently, statements of a dessert, of a disturbing nature regarding Nash Farm have been made by a member of the board. Statements such as, "I have been voting against Nash Farm since I've been serving on this board." And "Nash Farm has always been a myth, a fraud." I believe this type of rhetoric is not only irresponsible, but also dangerous. If this false narrative isn't called out, I believe it will inevitably lead to renewed efforts to raise an important battlefield and landmark to our state. It has been said that a fraud was concocted designating Nash Farm as a battlefield, with many websites extending and reinforcing the myth. Such websites include the American Battlefield Trust, visit henrycounty.com, and exploregeorgia.org, our state's official travel and tourism website. All of these list Nash Farm Battlefield as a location of Kilpatrick's Raid, the largest cavalry charge in the entire Atlanta campaign. Is it possible that our state government missed such a crucial fact, such as the authenticity of Nash Farm, and published a fallacy? If, if it was as obvious a fact as some are saying, how could they publish and officially endorse a myth? Well, supposing that all things are possible, and even state agencies could make mistakes, I will not belabor this point. There has been distributed to each of you a packet of information regarding the archaeological finds, as well as documented primary sources proving that Nash Farm is indeed a battlefield. There have been numerous archaeological digs conducted on the property, unearthing around three thousand artifacts, including weapons, belt buckles, musical instruments, uniform pieces, bullets, and horse tack, which is the equipment that goes on the horses. I asked the board, "Where would one find such items other than a battlefield?" I believe the overwhelming archaeological evidence speaks for itself, so much so that the fact that I have to stand here and defend it is absolutely ridiculous. Those who are saying that Nash Farm isn't a battlefield will have to disprove Union and Confederate military maps, as well as diaries of soldiers who fought at and near Nash Farm. You will have to disprove Thompson Edward Nash's Southern Claims Commission file, where he requested reimbursement from the United States government for losses suffered due to the battle. You will have to disprove the thousands of artifacts, including weapons, ammunition, and tack, exactly matching what Kilpatrick's cavalry carried. The absolute mountain of evidence pointing to the authenticity of Nash Farm Battlefield cannot be ignored or denied. Very simply, the facts are not on your side. I believe that everyone in this room, including every member of the board, already knows the truth, that Nash Farm is a battlefield and the location of Kilpatrick's Raid, the largest cavalry charge of the entire Atlanta campaign, as this gentleman before me has so demonstrated. The obvious historical truth that Nash Farm is a battlefield will not be wiped away by changing a sign. My question is, why is it under such scrutiny? The fraud isn't that Nash Farm is a battlefield. Rather, the real fraud is the assertion that it is not. The actual myth of Nash Farm is the conspiracy theory that a battle never took place here. I would like to make a proposal. Let's put the authenticity of Nash Farm on a trial, so to speak. You present evidence that it's a hoax, and we will present evidence that it is a battlefield. We will simply present the evidence and let the facts win the day. There is a saying regarding historical research, by the way, something we reenactors are quite familiar with. The burden of proof rests upon the shoulders of the one making the claim. You say Nash Farm is a fraud? Prove it.
Thank you. In our final public comment?
Mr. Swanson.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Uh, Wayne Swanson, Hampton, Georgia. Uh, owner of Swanson Family Farm on Jonesboro Road. I also sit on the Parks and Rec Board for District Two. My parents told me a long time ago, "When people show you who they are, believe them." Uh, over the couple of years with this issue at this park that's in my neighborhood, and I don't usually do this, but I'm gonna step back to say, not only am I a businessman in the community, I'm a board member on Parks and Rec here in Henry County. I donate my time and resources. I'm a board member for a young men's mentoring group called Future Mountain Movers, where we teach them agriculture and how to build and learn and strive for better. I work with, uh, FFA in Henry County, where I volunteer my time, my resources, and my product. I speak to Dutch Town High School Ag students. I speak to Eagles Landing Ag students. And I am on the Board for Agriculture Advisory for Port Valley State University. I'm committed to the county. But, when people gin things up, I had a thriving business, and these people decided that because we did not think that a Confederate flag should be flown on county property, started making posts that I was a jihadist, that I was a Muslim selling, uh, halal meats, and that I was stealing property time by orchestrating and helping to put on a farmer's market in the county that I donated my time and services for. Very committed to the county, but again, I believe people when they tell me who they are. I am also the person who went into the museum and saw some things in the museum that I'm not sure people went to. Even after going into the museum, I negotiated with the folks and we agreed to put the farmer's market around the museum, because they didn't have any visitors. Nobody was going. They got the most visitors that they had in years because of the very diverse group of people who came to the farmer's market. I'm also the person who went in and saw the big hole in the building and the mold where these people who claimed to have cared so much about the property dumped concrete out there, um, had dilapidated signs, a literal hole where you can see the sky in a county building. Cost us thousands of dollars to repair. Mold remediation. And these are people who said they care. We won't get to the part where people came by my house with big flags on their truck, trying to intimidate us. We're not intimidated. We're not scared. But if you wanna be a partner, partner. But I'm gonna get to the point where I said, "I believe people when they tell me who they are." So this is what was important to them. It wasn't the reenactment. See if we can get that to where it can be seen. They took down the POW sign, flag, and put the Confederate flag back up, and then had the nerve to say, "Did you think for one second we wouldn't have this flag back up this weekend?" When people show you who they are, believe them. I can't, I don't know if they do anything in the community. I, I really don't like rattling off statistics. I am here committed to Henry County. These folks wanted to make some money off us, 'cause they couldn't put that thing anywhere else. And they're mad because their money got messed up. But believe them. Who would dare take down a POW flag to fly a flag that caused a bunch of confusion? That's all they wanna do, is cause confusion. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comments. And, um, we will now move into the next item on the agenda, which includes the approval of our amendments for April second of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any changes or revisions to those minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved. At this time, the floor is open for any comments from any commissioner. Seeing none, hearing none, um, any comments from the- Um, any comments from the county manager? Okay, no comments from the county manager. Our next upcoming meetings and events on May the seventh at six o'clock P.M., there will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And then on May fourteenth at nine o'clock A.M., will be a call Board of Commissioners workshop meeting, um, SPLUS Five list, and also budget discussions for information only. On May twenty-first, at the regular, um, Board of Commissioners meeting at six-thirty P.M., there will be a meeting. And then, um, again, we've got another, um, on May the seventh, um, at nine o'clock A.M. will be a budget public hearing. Um, so at this time, are there any other comments with anything good for the group? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion? Second and second. All in favor, please stand. All right.